Good evening. I've got a quorum, so I'm going to get started. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson is on business travel, so he won't be joining us tonight. And there's Councilmember Jones. So we have just one person missing from the dais. It is 6:30. I've got a little something I need to read before I call the meeting to order. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. If you're in the audience and you're planning on speaking on a particular item, if you would please go ahead and sign up for that item as we start going through items that we're going to be making decisions. If we've got several folks signed up for it, I'll call that item earlier so that people don't have to just sit here all night, although I know you enjoy our company. But we'll try to get you guys out of here if you want. So with that, it is 6:30. I'm calling the meeting to order. And we have a very special evening this evening. And you will see that on the Pledge of Allegiance, it says Girl Scouts. But I know that Emily Boland's brother is here, and he is also in uniform. So I would like to revise that to all Scouts. So if you are currently a member of the Scouts, if you would please come forward. You guys can stand up here by the podium. Yes, that's you. Come on. Emily, you are an active scout. Okay. And these wonderful scouting folks are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the state flag. If you would please rise.
.................................................................................................................. Wait, Scouts, come back, and Andy will take your picture. Come, come back and face Andy. Come back, come back. Oh, and Colin's going to get you, too. Get to, you guys get together. Scooch up.
Thank you. And now if Bishop Sampleton would please come forward. We will all rise, and Bishop Sampleton is going to lead our invocation tonight. He is at the Inspirational Pentecostal Church. He's a native from Gonzales and wrote a book, Don't Give Up, Keep the Faith. And we have a copy of that book in our library. So Bishop Sampleton?
At this time, shall we bow our heads in a word of prayer? O Lord, awaken the consciousness of all people and their leaders. Rise up men and women full of love and generosity who can speak and act for peace and show us new ways in which hatred can be left behind, wounds can be healed, and unity can be restored.
Thank you, Bishop. Appreciate that very much. Well, we're going to talk about that in just a second. So we're now at Presentations. We're at 4A, and we have a young lady with us, Emily Boland. If she'll come forward, I'll meet you down at the microphone up here. But Council, you will see that you each have a bag of Girl Scout cookies. So we all love Girl Scouts. Thank you for that. And Scouts of Bastrop, we've just learned that our city attorney has a daughter that is a Girl Scout. And I heard some purchasing of cookies. And I was reminding Council that they need to shop local with their, with our own Bastrop. And I've been assured that there's enough purchases to go around. Linda, you're, the city manager said anybody, and everybody needs to come to her house. So I'm going to run down and join Emily and tell you guys a little bit about Emily. Okay, several of you are probably familiar with Scouts getting their Eagle. We hear about Eagle Scouts a lot. We don't hear about Girl Scouts as much. But the highest award that a Girl Scout can get is the Gold Award. And Emily Boland was given the Gold Award on June 9th. Let's have a round of applause for that. So I'm going to read, I'm going to scan over some of the proclamation and not read absolutely all of it. But "The Girl Scouts of Central Texas is the preeminent leadership development organization for girls. Girl Scouts offer every girl a chance to practice a lifetime of leadership, adventure, and success. In 1916, before women in the U.S. even had the right to vote, the beloved founder of Girl Scouts, Juliette Gordon Low, recognized the importance of community service and had the vision to honor girls who went above and beyond. At the time, they had the highest level of Girl scouting, and it was called the Golden Eaglelet, probably tied to the Boy Scouts, Eagle Scout, I don't know. But today, the Gold Award is the name. And it is given to a girl who has character and remains remarkable for the award. It's the highest award a Girl Scout can earn. Emily's project was called Storytelling to Seniors. She created a project for children and young adults to read to dementia patients in the local community and at Silver Pines Nursing Facility. And one of the key things about the program is that it's sustainable and will keep going after Emily has gone on to other things. So I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize June 12th as Girl Scout Gold Award recipient Emily Boland Day. Let's have a round of applause for her.
Congratulations. She's beautiful. Beautiful. So good. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Emily. We're so, so, so very proud of you. It's great to have you in the community. The Girl Scouts are going to do a very wise thing, and that is exit and go have a party for Emily in our conference room. So they are absolutely, thank you for the cookies. Congratulations, and best of luck in the future. I always know it's a small world. And recently, I was at an event, and I ran into a woman that I worked with at Motorola, and she's the CEO of the Girl Scouts. So it's, it's back to the, it's a very small world. So, all right. We're on to the Mayor's Report. Colin's going to hook us up. And I've got just a couple really quick things for my minute with the mayor before I do my Mayor's Report. The first thing is the Texas City Attorneys Association, the TCAA, is having their summer conference this week, Wednesday through Friday, out at the Hyatt. And Mr. Flores is the head of that organization, and he's told us to brace ourselves. We're going to be invaded by a whole bunch of lawyers. So we hope that we are invaded, and that you guys have a great time out at the Hyatt, and come into town and take advantage of Bastrop. So we're happy that they're going to be here. June 1st was the first day of hurricane season. And I know with the weather we've had the last few days, hurricanes are the very last thing that you're thinking about. But I got a letter from the GLO, and they wanted us to remind everyone there's three things we need to be aware of. Maintain your flood insurance. If you live in an area that is prone, or after your experience with Harvey, remember there's a 30-day waiting period. And they are expecting a very active hurricane season this year. So make sure you get that taken care of. Safeguard all of your important papers, and make sure you have emergency supplies like bottled water and canned goods. The truth of the matter is, whether it's hurricane season or not, those are three good things to just always make sure that you're taking care of. But it's hard to believe it's already hurricane season. And speaking of bottled water, the fire department is having their bottled water drive. It is really hot out there. And if you are so inclined, it would be wonderful if you would donate either water or Gatorade sports drinks kind of thing to the fire department. If you contact Chief Wobus, I want to extend a special thanks to the Family Crisis Center. They recently made a large donation of water and sports drink to the fire department. And we need to take care of our firefighters. So with that, we'll get going on the Mayor's Report. The first item is we've got some meetings coming up. There we go. So we have a meeting on Wednesday at 6:30. So that's tomorrow at 6:30. And several of you may be aware that we are looking at our subdivision ordinance and making some changes. So we've had a couple of public hearings. We did a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning. But these meetings, we're having one for the general public. We're also having one for developers and home builders, and we're having one for engineers and surveyors. As you can imagine, like everything, your perspective is different depending on how you're going to interact with that ordinance. So we're trying to get as much input as we possibly can. Wanted to make sure everyone was aware of these meetings, and please participate if you get a chance. The next thing, you'll see the things that I did between May 11th and June 1st. I was honored to be a part of the Memorial Day service. And you'll see that's Chief Altgelt and the sheriff placing a wreath in honor of a veteran for one of the ladies here in Bastrop. We've had our Bastrop Music Festival, the Best Leadership Class. I was honored to give them their graduation, be a part of their graduation, and give them their certificates. In the upper right-hand corner, you see the FCI Leadership Class. That's the Federal Correctional Institute. And they invite the community out on a quarterly basis. And they had a tour of the facility. And their leadership, their warden and their assistant warden, had their next level down managers do the tour. And it was a big deal for them. And so they interacted with all of the community and toured us all around and answered questions. And we were trying to think of hard questions because the warden said, "Make them work for that leadership that they were working on." So that's a group of the, that's a picture of the group of people that gave us the tour. And it was just an outstanding tour. One of the other things that happened between May 11th and June 1st is BISD got their superintendent. Barry Edwards was named superintendent. That's a picture I took from the audience. I'm really excited about Barry and getting started. Dr. Lee's in the audience with us tonight. We just have an outstanding leadership team over there and wish them the best of luck and enjoy partnering with them. I also attended the law enforcement awards. You can see in the bottom-left a picture of all the great officers that we have taking care of our community. And then, because I'm always supposed to do that sort of thing, try to make as many ribbon cuttings as I possibly can. The New Haven Assisted Living and Memory Care, I know personally of one family in town, it's completely changed their lives by having that memory care facility open so close in the community. Texas Tile Works is a great family-owned business. And I did a quick BEDC retail recruitment trip. And yes, it was in Las Vegas, but I was there less than 24 hours. And I put, I think I capped out at 23,000 steps that day. So it wasn't quite the Vegas trip that some people think about. On the next page, I was really happy to be a part of the summer reading program, the Kickoff Day on June 2nd. I'll have some pictures of that at the next, next council meeting. We had the Chamber monthly luncheon. And last Saturday, we had a great art celebration. And I understand that the Casa Casino night was a great success. For upcoming things on the next page, tomorrow, we have our quarterly community support meeting. We give money to several of our nonprofits. And one of the things that they do is meet with us on a quarterly basis to make sure we're all tied out and working together. Those have been some really great meetings. Friday night is the Juneteenth Dinner. Saturday is the Juneteenth Parade. And Sunday is Father's Day. So call your father, hug your father, call somebody who's been like a father. But please don't forget Father's Day. Council want to bring to your attention that this time next week will be in our first special budget workshop. So we will have a meeting next Tuesday. There's several ribbon cuttings. And then on the 26th, we'll be back at City Council. So that's all I have for my Mayor's Report. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything?
Yes, ma'am, I do have one thing. I want to remind everybody again about Juneteenth. I do know we have some Juneteenth committee members here. I think they're going to talk during Citizen Comments, which is a good thing. And remind everybody, we're going to have a grand classic car show over at Shubert Theater starting early Saturday morning. So everybody come out and enjoy all the old cars. We're going to have quite a few cars over there. That's all I have.
Great. Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy two weeks, capped off by last week. I attended the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Conference in Georgetown. I was honored to go with our city manager and our communications team of Sarah O'Brien and Colin Guerra. I'm afraid it was kind of like going on a date with your dad for them. I was, I was kind of their shadow the whole time. But I wanted to go because we, as council members, one of our charges this year to staff and in our own operations wanted to make sure that we were communicating better with our citizens. And I wanted to get a feel for what other cities are encountering. And it was, it was an eye-opener. You know, we, we sometimes feel like we hit our hit with misinformation campaigns of one sort or another, some small, some large. And to go and hear what other cities are also experiencing, it was, it was very interesting, and I appreciate the chance to go, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Jones?
Okay, so on Memorial Day, which Councilmember Peterson, he oversaw that, which I'm so proud of him. He's a veteran, and so is Lyle. I'm so proud of y'all. I was getting my son ready for his first trip on a ship, sewing on name tags. And anybody who's ever had to get their kid ready for stuff like that, you know, it's really hard, but I'm super proud of him. So I didn't make it to that, but I was sort of involved in that in another way. And I've also been fishing on the river a lot because it's time for fishing. And that's really, really, really fun. And those of you who don't have a boat to go out there, I'm very sorry for you.
So are you offering them? I'm sorry, that might be different. Okay. City manager, do you have anything? All right, we are moving on to work sessions. Council, it's, I am going to encourage you to turn to page 25, I think it is. That doesn't seem right. That seems too far away. But we're on item 5A, and we're going to discuss changes to the boards and commissions, ordinances, and resolutions. And I realize I've got some folks. I have one person signed up to speak. We've got several things to go over. Ms. Clemmons? I'm sorry, page 15. 15. Page 15, if you're at home and looking at the packet. 5A. We're on 5A, discussing change, discuss changes to the boards and commissions, ordinances, and resolutions. Ms. Clemmons, do you want to hear the conversation and then comment, or do you want to comment first? It's totally up to you. Okay. Ms. Clemmons, if you would please come forward and state your name where everyone can hear it.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Clemmons, and I am the Vice President of the Library Board here in Bastrop, Texas. I have a letter that I would like to read to the council, and then I will give each one of you a copy. Dear Mayor Schroeder and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I would like to read a letter that was unanimously approved by the Library Board. First, we would like to express our thanks for the banquet, pens, and recognition we received at the city banquet in November honoring volunteers. The dinner was delicious, and the recognition was gratifying. We appreciate it. Tonight, we would like to address the question of whether to limit the terms of those that sit on city boards. We believe it would be a mistake to arbitrarily limit the terms of those dedicated volunteers that generously give their time and talents to the various boards that advise city officials and staff. Although we speak specifically about the Library Board, the following is true of all of the city boards. Long-serving term members provide resources and an instructional memory that would be lost if these members were limited to only two terms. Long-serving members understand how the library has changed, what has worked, and what hasn't. We develop and work together, each knowing the other. We each know each other's talents and strengths. We've worked together for many years and have created a cohesive team. That cohesiveness will be lost with frequent departures of veteran members. It may take a year or two for a new board member to really understand how the library functions and the different constituents it serves. Board members also volunteer for library events such as the Holiday Open House, book sales, and summer reading activities. Veteran members are familiar with these events and can support them more efficiently while helping any newer members to learn the ropes. Moreover, the public comes to recognize these board members. Those of us who have served for many years, they know they can contact us if they have any questions or concerns about the library. Term limits will create a charm on the board that will leave the public unsure of who the board members are. We heartily welcome new members on the board, but not at the expense of the willing volunteer members or the willing veteran members. The fact is, when we do have a vacancy on the board, it takes a bit of work by both the library director and the board members to find a volunteer to fill the vacancy. There's no long line of folks waiting to serve on the boards. Often, there's a gap of volunteers to fill vacancies. So why create more spots to fill? In addition, term limits are completely unnecessary. The mayor has the opportunity to replace each board member at the expiration of her term. Although the veteran members may apply for another term, the mayor is under no obligation to reappoint the veteran board member. She could instead appoint another applicant if she chooses to. Term limits would merely reduce the number of candidates of her choice to choose from. More importantly, long-serving members have shown the greatest dedication to the library. Why would one want to unnecessarily force them from the board? Why wouldn't you want to continue to reap the benefits of their knowledge and experience to benefit the library? Why wouldn't you want to reward them with the honor of their continuous service? This was sincerely signed by each member of the Bastrop Library Board, and the names are here with their signature. And I do have a copy for each one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Clemmons?
Do we have an opportunity to speak after you read the ordinance?
Oh, yeah. We're not taking any action tonight. This is just a work session. Thank you very much. So we'll have lots of opportunity to, to speak back and forth. And as we work through the staff report, that the term limits is specifically one of the items. So we can talk about that some more then, if that's, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Jones? So we're looking at the policy explanation, and I don't know, there may or may not be any slides. So I apologize for that, but it is in the packet. There were two boards that I did not make appointments to, the Vision Task Force and the North Area Form-Based Code. And I believe that that was consensus in September. And we just, Council, I need to know if that is still your consensus, because we need to get that by and last.
Yes.
Is there nods, yes, from everyone? Okay. The other thing was to move the appointments from June to October 1st so it would align with the budget. And it would also keep, when you have a new mayor coming in in May and then two weeks later trying to make appointments. Everybody's nodding yes, and that makes sense. For the public to know, this is the year that we're changing from June appointments to October appointments, and everyone will serve until they are replaced. And they may be reappointed and continue to serve, or they may be replaced with someone different. I've had a couple of questions about BEDC. Councilmember Rogers is serving on BEDC. She is allowed to do that. I am also serving on BEDC. The bylaws allow to council members, and she's going to serve in that capacity till October. So she is continuing to be on that board and all of the other boards. Everybody who's on it stays on it until we do our appointments in October. And I think Council's clear about that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Then, as a part of moving that, there is going to be a newsletter. And city manager, are you still on track for July 1st? Just when we're hoping to get that in the mail. And that'll be a newsletter that goes to all the residents that talks about the boards and commissions, talks about what it means to be on the board, how they, how many there are, where, if you live someplace, which ones you're eligible to be on. And that is going to go to all the residents of the city and all the residents that are in the ETJ. In addition to that, we're going to have our first volunteer fair, and that is on Tuesday, July 17th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Convention Center. And there'll be a lot of Facebook posts about that, and that'll be mentioned in the newsletter as well so that people know how to apply for appointments for the board. We're going to talk about the application as the next agenda item, so I'm going to not talk about the application right now. The deadline for applications is going to be August 15th. I've had a few folks fill out the old application, but by July 1st, we will have our new application. So I know that the city secretary has been assisting me, and we're trying to, if you guys are, once we agree to the new application, we're going to contact the three or four folks that have filled out the old application and let them know that there's a new application and ask them to please fill that out. The reason there's a deadline of August 15th is because we're then going to interview. And when I say "we," that's collectively "we." All of the council is going to, during the last week of August, have interviews and interview the folks who have applied for the different boards. And then I will submit my appointments during the, I think, the second meeting in September so that when, if you guys confirm them, then for October 1st, we will be good to go. We will do training. The city attorney will help. They'll make sure that folks understand when the, when their meetings are, open records, public information, ethics training. All of that will be done at the same time. I know we've had problems in the past of when that training was going to take place, but it will always be the first Thursday in October. Council, we had, in general, agreed to all of this. If, is anyone opposed to anything that I'm mentioning? Is this all sounding right? Okay. The, we have a situation where there is a resolution that was back in 2011. It was Resolution R. 2011-8, and it was for a service pin. And I think that it maybe happened once in 2011, and then it didn't happen again until we did it last November. And what we're doing now, for those of you that attended the volunteer appreciation, we kind of do the little trophies and do all that. I would like to replace the service pins. It turned into a nightmare of keeping track of the records. But if anyone wants to keep the service pins, now's the time to, to speak up. I'm hoping that the annual, every year, everybody on the board will be invited to the banquet in November. And then if they're rolling off, then they would get a trophy, for lack of a better term, but it, you know, it's a plaque kind of thing. Councilmember Peterson?
Keep it in place, Mayor.
You'd like to keep the pins in place? And do you want to do fives and tens, or how do you want to do that?
Sure. Fives and tens, and of course, the twenties, thirties.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I, may I address that?
Please.
I understand the problem. I mean, you give a pin for five, and then you come up and not too long later, you're giving another pin for another time period. I'm wondering if we could give pins to sitting members because I know, I know a lot of people that those pins are important to. And then, then give them the plaque for certain periods of service.
So as long, so... Is anyone opposed to anything that I'm mentioning? Is this all sounding right? We have a situation where there is a resolution that was back in 2011. It was Resolution R. 2011-8, and it was for a service pin. And I think that it maybe happened once in 2011, and then it didn't happen again until we did it last November. And what we're doing now, for those of you that attended the volunteer appreciation, we kind of do the little trophies and do all that. I would like to replace the service pins. It turned into a nightmare of keeping track of the records. But if anyone wants to keep the service pins, now's the time to speak up. I'm hoping that the annual, every year, everybody on the board will be invited to the banquet in November, and then if they're rolling off, then they would get a trophy, for lack of a better term, but you know, it's a plaque kind of thing. Councilmember Peterson?
Keep it in place, Mayor.
You'd like to keep the pins in place? And do you want to do fives and tens, or how do you want to do that?
Sure. Fives and tens, and of course, the twenties, thirties.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
May I address that?
Please.
I understand the problem. You give a pin for five, and then you come up and not too long later, you're giving another pin for another time period. I'm wondering if we could give pins to sitting members, because I know a lot of people that those pins are important to, and then give them the plaque for certain periods of service.
So as long, so if they're sitting, then they would get a pin? And then only get the trophy when they're rolling off of a board?
Either that or for length of service.
Which length of, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to understand.
Five, ten, I was addressing Councilman Peterson.
Do pins and trophies?
I'm just saying, you give us these pins to wear as council people. I know that some of the folks that get their pins are very proud of those pins. And I'm saying, when they go on, this is just a suggestion, when they go on a board or commission, that they get a pin to wear, and then they get the plaque, I mean, their little trophy for length of service.
I think that's different than what Councilmember Peterson's talking about.
Yeah, it is. I was just saying, it was another option.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Peterson? Okay. So, and Councilmember Jones, do you have an opinion?
No, I agree. I think the pins are really important to people, and I agree with both of you. You just have to figure out how exactly you want to handle it. So I know it's maybe some trouble, but I think it's, people are pretty proud of them, so.
So are you guys in agreement with Councilmember Ennis's suggestion that any sitting person on a board has a pin? And maybe it's City of Bastrop, maybe we come up with one City of Bastrop Board and Commission or something, that's the pin. So there's no more five and 10-year pins, there's that pin, so you know that you're a sitting board member. And then when you roll off of a board, your trophy would say what years you had served on that board. Am I understanding you correctly?
You could do that, or you could give it for length of service. I was addressing Councilman Peterson's comment about length of service, so however you want to do that.
What do you think about that, Bill? What do you think about getting trophies when you roll off the board and you get it for that specific, if it's seven years, if it's 15 or 13 years, that's when you get your trophy? What do you think about that?
That'll work. That should work. Yes. Okay.
Okay. I'm not the one who's going to be figuring out pins and trophies. So for clarification, what I hear is if we came up with a City of Bastrop Board and Commission pin that you were given when you were appointed, then that meets the comment that our Board and Commissioners appreciate the opportunity to support that. And then when they leave a specific board, we would acknowledge them at the annual Board and Commission Appreciation Banquet with the trophy similar to what we gave in November. Is that correct? Awesome. So just to be clear, the Resolution R. 2011-8 will be repealed, because we will not be distributing service pins. What we will be given is a Board and Commission pin as a part of their orientation when they're sworn in. Is that fair? Okay.
They get to keep that when they leave?
Yeah, they get to keep, they can always have the pin, and then they'll have a trophy that says when they were on a board. Everybody's okay with that? Okay. The other thing that we agree to, that I think, well, that I know has already been happening, and that is, we televise city council meetings, we televise our joint meetings with our boards and commissions, we televise BEDC meetings, and we televise planning and zoning meetings. And I think that's been beneficial for several folks in the community, but that was another way of getting communication out. So I think we're all in agreement with that. Does anyone have any problems? Okay. All right. The next part is the current ordinance, and this was kind of weird, and I don't know if you guys have read it lately, but it says that in April, the city staff will give the mayor the attendance for the year. So if someone has missed four meetings in June, July, August, and September, according to the ordinance, you wouldn't know about that until April of the following year, because it's only technically reported once a year. What makes more sense to me is that our staff liaisons keep up with the attendance every month, and our ordinance says if you miss three unexcused meetings in a row, that you've, by default, you've left the post, because we've all served on boards where sometimes it's hard to make a quorum. And sometimes, people, life happens. Sometimes, you know, maybe you thought you were going to have the time, and it ends up being a bad night. So I would like to see us have staff liaisons continue to keep track of the attendance, and then when they have a problem, if they have somebody that's missed, that they bring it to my attention, and then we find out if we need to replace. A lot of times with a phone call, it turns into, "I forgot I was even on that board. That's a horrible night for me, and please take me off, and I'd rather be on a different board." Are you guys okay with that? Or do you want the ordinance to say that you want, at a council meeting, to review attendance monthly or quarterly? Okay. Councilmember Ennis, are you okay with?
I think that's kind of goes under the heading of your purview, Mayor.
Okay. And I'm comfortable with that, but the current ordinance says that as council members, you have an opportunity to see the attendance. The truth is, you guys can ask anybody anytime about any board if you want to know. Okay. Well, then we're going to not do that in the future. And then there's the, "How many people should you have on a board?" question. You'll see that there's a chart that has been put together. Some items, we really don't have a conversation about. Specifically, planning and zoning is in the city charter, but it has nine members. So we will have a charter review committee later this year, and if they want to look at the number of planning and zoning members, they can, but we can't change the charter, so planning and zoning is set at nine. I have had several conversations, and there has been some discussions about reducing the number of people on boards to seven. It's always good to have an odd number, so that when you get ready to take a vote on something. But you will see that we have everything from five plus alternates, we have one board with six, and we have one board with seven, and several boards with nine. The Youth Advisory Council has 12, but that's so separate than the group of folks that we would be pulling from, and they've just written their bylaws, that I'm fine with leaving the youth council the way it is. So does anyone have any interest in trying to have some uniformity on the number of people or in reducing from nine to seven? I'm told with nine, it's often hard to get a quorum. You have an absence, you need five. When you get to that big of a number, sometimes it can be a quorum problem.
That's actually, that's what I was going to ask you, is if there's nine, are they having trouble filling that many seats? You know?
Honestly, through the appointments that we had last year, during the last year, we've really have had applicants for everything. And obviously, we're hoping that the Board Volunteer Fair that we have on July 17th will also bring out some more folks. So that's not the problem as much as sometimes making the quorum is.
Well, that's kind of what I meant. I mean, not that, filling the seat on a monthly basis. You know, you can appoint them, but are they all showing up? You just had said it before, I was about to ask that.
Sorry. Yes, it's my understanding that some, not all of the boards, but some of the boards are having a hard time making quorum.
So you probably answered my question. Could we check with our staff liaisons on those particular boards and come up with a list of the boards that are having that kind of problem and address those separately rather than making a wholesale effort to change all these makeups? Because some of these are written into ordinance, which means we have to go in and rewrite that.
Well, and that's what we're doing. So that's why we're having the conversation now. If we're going to change them, now's the time to change them. If there's no appetite to change the number on any board, then we'll leave them like they are and move on down the road.
I don't have an appetite to.
Okay.
Have the boards, have any specific board requests that their number be changed other than the ethics? Or isn't it the ethics board we change?
Well, ethics is changed, because it was done by ordinance.
But we changed that to five. But if anyone else, if no one else needs a change, I don't know why we want to mess with it.
Main Street had, when there was a discussion about trying to unify things, they said that they thought they could go to seven, it would be a fairly easy thing. And so they haven't brought forward nominations, because they have two vacancies right now that they were leaving as vacancies. In case it went to seven, they would already be there. But it's really, like I said, now's the time that we're changing the ordinance. If you want to change any of the numbers, now's the time to do it. But the two, Councilmember Jones, I hear you saying, "Not unless someone specifically asks."
Yeah, and if Main Street wants seven members, let them, give them seven members. Other than that, I think everybody's good.
All right. And if they want to stay at nine, because nobody else is changing, you're fine with that, too. Is that correct? Same thing? Okay. So there will be no change to the number on any of the boards. It will reflect what you have in your packet. Okay. The next item is what Ms. Clemmons talked about, and that is a desire to set term limits. She is 1,000% correct that it's not absolutely required. Quite frankly, I can do that by not reappointing somebody. I can also reappoint someone. The discussion was, did we want to make it a part of an ordinance, or do you just want to leave that to whoever the mayor happens to be?
Leave it to the mayor.
It's all on you.
All on me. Councilmember Jones?
I have a really very strong opinion about this. Very strong.
Okay.
And that, and I'm just like, these women that serve on the library board are just outstanding, every single one of them. Every one of them, some of them have parents, all of them have kids, grandkids, so they are multi-generational. And I know for a fact that their kids help and participate and keep them from embarrassing themselves. If it's, that's what my kids say to me, that's why I said that. And, you know, to make good decisions for the community. And in my opinion, if there is somebody that wants to serve and to continue serving, and an example being the library board, who has been completely appropriate, up to date, and just done an outstanding job, I do not see any reason to intervene in that, because there are mechanisms in place to get people out if you want them out. And so I am absolutely not in favor of term limits in any way, shape, or form, other than what's in place as the mayor of maybe not appointing, if you don't want to reappoint. But if people want to serve and they're doing a great job and it works, keep it going. Okay. The one thing that I want us to be open to is it's awkward to have a volunteer fair and ask people to come apply if we're going to say there are no openings. So that's one thing. If we've got people in the community that want to serve, I think, well, I don't think, I know, I'm going to give their application just as much review and credit as other applications, because I think that the board should be a reflection of the community, and there may be some folks who are willing to serve, and I don't know how to say, "Well, sorry, you can't." Well, you know, it's just, if there's not a position, there's not a position. I do not think that it's our job to just, you know, if there's a board that is full and working, it's full and it's working. It's not just like, you know, everybody that gets a pom-pom gets to be a cheerleader. No, it's just there are so many spots. And if you want to keep that application on file, you do have openings on your board from time to time. Everybody has vacancies. And, you know, again, I just, I don't think there's, it's just like running out of food at a picnic. There's nothing wrong with that, you know? And I think that if the boards are working and you have people that want to serve, I think that that should be a very, it's a big deal. If you get on a board, it's a big deal. Like, if you apply and you get on because you applied and everybody else gets kicked off, that is just not a good way to run. You know, I don't think that's a good way to run and reward the people that are serving on our boards and commissions. I think that that is just very negative overall to the people who want to serve and are doing a really good job.
I appreciate that opinion, I really do. Councilmember Jones? One of the boards that I think personally works very, very well is the Main Street Advisory Board, because if you're interested in being on that board, you serve on a committee. And once you've served to your point successfully on a committee, and you've shown up and you've learned how to do things, then that organization looks at their committee members and decides who they want to have on the board. They put into their bylaws having term limits, because they wanted to keep some freshness on their board. So if we're not going to have term limits, and clearly you guys are not supportive of that, I would encourage not only the library board, but all of the boards to form committees, so that if there are people interested in serving, they have an opportunity to learn about the events and learn the inside.
So the other thing I want to say, though, is I do think that within the boards and committees, you know, I think that you should determine what your limit is on president. I mean, you don't want someone who's president and they just like, they won't get out of the position for 20 years. No. I mean, I can see within the committee that you want to keep those positions moving possibly. It's just a recommendation, you know? But that's just, you know, if you want to allow those boards to have control of how people sit and how long they sit within the committee, I think that that's a good compromise. And also, you know, what you said, and just about people being aware of who applies for those positions and knowing, you know, if there's 15 people that want to apply for the library board, and you're like, "Wow, this person really might do a better job than me, I want to sit out for a while," that's great, you know? I think that that's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any other comments about term limits? So, City Manager, we will not be putting term limits in. As Councilmember Rogers said, it's all on me, at least for the next two years. The next thing is, when the city manager went through all of the purposes for each of the boards, when it got to the park ordinance, there wasn't a specific purpose written. The council liaison to the park board is Mayor Protem Nelson, and he wrote a paragraph that I believe he shared with council. Have you guys all had an opportunity to review that? It's just a few sentences, if you don't mind indulging me. How about if I read it? "The Parks Board will provide recommendations on plans and programs designed to assist the Parks and Recreation Department in maintaining and improving the city parks and in providing recreation programs for the general welfare of the people of the city. A major Parks Board objective is to recommend and assist in the development of public interest in the Parks and Recreation Department's activities and to solicit, to the fullest extent possible, participation of community groups, the general public, and public and private agencies." You guys okay with that for a purpose of the Parks Board?
Sounds great. Has the board itself seen that?
I think Council, I think Mayor Protem shared that with them, but we absolutely can all make sure that Trey gets a copy of it and shows it with the board.
I'd like to hear their endorsement of that before we codify it.
Okay. All right. City Manager, is that clear for you? Okay. Then the last item on the staff report is, is there anything else? Because quite frankly, I don't know if you read through the document that was prepared, but some boards have bylaws, some boards don't. And City Attorney, I was going to ask you, are all the boards required to have bylaws, or does it matter?
There's no legal requirement that they all have bylaws.
Okay. Because we have many that do not, and we have some kind of funky residency requirements. But when you, the city manager sent out a week ago a pretty lengthy email, is there anything else that you want included on this ordinance that the city manager and city attorney will be revising? Any other? Yeah. So then, so if you have no other things, the stuff that we talked about tonight is what they will bring back to us. Are you prepared to vote on it at the next one, or do you want to have one more workshop?
I'm prepared to vote at the next.
Okay. So this will come back as for an item for consideration. It'll have to be read twice, right?
Yes, ma'am, and it won't come back at the next meeting, because this is really complicated. And Alan and I are going to attempt to figure out how to make the journey I have taken to get to this point less cumbersome for somebody that just would casually like to know. So we need to give Alan some time to figure out how to make that work.
Okay. But they are working against a deadline, because we'll need it in place before we have our...
Yes, ma'am. I got what I need tonight to make sure the newsletter is published. You'll have it the first meeting in July. What you won't have it is at the next meeting, because the agenda packet is due on Friday.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Can I, may I ask you just briefly?
Sure.
You know, maybe once, why is it cumbersome? What's going on that, that's making it difficult for you?
In some instances, some information is in one place for all boards and commissions, and then each ordinance that created each one of these has some slight variance that doesn't remember, that doesn't resemble something else. So you can go to a park, I mean, to a board and resolu-, uh, board and commission resolution and get about 85% of what you need to know, but things that are specific to each board, then you have to go on a search and seizure mission. And then some of the things that you need to know are in the bylaws, and they're not codified in the Code of Ordinances. So it has been quite the journey for me to learn how to do all of this so we could get it to a place to advertise it for the board and commission fair. And so Alan and I have talked about this, and some of it was adopted with resolutions, some with ordinance, and so we just need a few days to demystify the process, if you will.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, for example, the, we've talked a lot about the library board. The library has its own charter and bylaws, and it says that it shall be reviewed by council a minimum of every three years. Mr. Peterson, when's the last time you reviewed the bylaws and charter of the library board? That'd be never? Yeah. So there's some things that we need to, to clean up, and there, there's no point making rules for ourselves if we're not gonna take care of them, and if they don't need city council input every three, you know, so that's the, I think it's the second attachment in the email. Okay. So unless anybody has any other comments, we're gonna go on to 5B, which is review the revised application for boards and commissions. This is what it looks like now. I don't know if we have a, we may not have a picture of it. The one comment that I have is that it says residency requirements, and I think we just mean residency. And it's asking a person, do they live within the city limits? Do they live in the ETJ? Or do they live in the ETJ within BISD limits? And it's asking those questions that way because different boards have different residency requirements. And when you come to the fair, because some of you who live in the ETJ have no idea that you live in the ETJ, but when you come to the fair, there'll be a computer and you can put in your address and we'll be able to tell you whether you live inside the city limits or in the ETJ. So all of you guys got a copy of the application? Do you have any other comments or questions? Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I have, actually, just one minute, well, a few little quirks. I don't know where you have the phone. I don't know if anybody has a home phone anymore, if we want to just put their cellphone instead of, you know, I don't know how many people have one. The other part that concerned me is the, the little blurb about, you know, whether you're convicted, blah, blah, blah. This is pretty, you know, broad. I mean, if you're, you know, 50 and you just, it says, you know, it goes on whether you were, you know, weren't actually even convicted, you were just, you didn't say, I think you should narrow it down some because I think it might be a little intimidating to say if you did something when you were 18 in college, you know, and it might still be on your record, but you don't, you know what I'm saying? Most, I went back through the, through, on our job applications, reviewing an application to become a, you know, city councilperson, you just have to write whether you're convicted of a felony. And this goes on to, you know, whether you deferred judification, all sorts of different things. So I just think it's pretty broad, and it might scare people that did something 30 years ago in college, then, you know?
I'm, I'm, I'm not smiling to be smarter, but the current application has a disclaimer that's like nine things. Well, I mean, it is, that is the most intimidating thing, but I'm fine with saying, have you been convicted of a felony?
Right, I don't know if you're, have you been theft or something?
Are you guys, Councilmember Innocent, do you have thoughts on that?
Were you suggesting it be taken out or clarified?
Well, I, I think you need to clarify it. I mean, do you care if they tore a paper at their parents' house at 18?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified.
Oh, is it? I think you cared whether they tore it.
I think she, yes, yes, I want to know if they tore it. So, so, Council, are you okay if the, if the question turns into, have you ever been convicted of a felony?
So let me, let me ask you a question. So if you have been convicted of a felony, that doesn't necessarily keep you from serving on the board?
That's right.
That's correct. I just want to make that clear. Because there's people that have convictions, and there's bad things that happen, and people get over that, and I'm a pretty weak believer in that, and we need to be open to allowing people to serve that have done their time and moved on. So just wanted to make that clear.
And that brings up a good point. City Attorney, is there a reason for us to ask somebody that? Is there any, are we in paranoid mode? Because it's kind of, if we would let them serve anyway, why are we asking?
Not all felonies are equal.
True, not, not all felonies are equal. My, my comment to Councilman Rogers earlier was, it'd be good if we could zero in on what is the harm we're trying to prevent, or what are the, the types of offenses we think make you ineligible. If we wanted to say someone was convicted of a crime of dishonesty or a crime of theft, that's a little bit easier to justify, you know, particularly if they're gonna be involved with handling money, or certain offenses might disqualify them from being around children, those sorts of things. To, to blanket, ban someone, or request for too much information, maybe data we just don't want to have.
So do you have a suggestion of what is a, a good middle ground that gives us reasonable protection but's not intrusive?
You know, a common one you find when it comes to municipal employment or service is, is asking about a crime of moral turpitude, which usually means dishonesty, theft, those sorts of things. I could work on some language, but I don't have anything with me.
Okay. You guys okay with letting Alan think of something that's come up with verbiage that's reasonable within municipalities? Councilmember Innocent, you okay with that?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up, Drew Silver. That was a really, really good point. I appreciate it.
I just have one more question, I'm sorry.
You bet. No, you're doing great.
On, on the second page, or the bottom of that page, or however you do it, on the Historic Landmark Commission, it has resident on there twice with two, two marks, two, you know, squares to check. Do you have to be a double resident?
There are two spots for residencies, and they, they, they're, the way their bylaws are written, there's like spot one is like this, spot two is like that. So it's which thing are you applying for? I think that's how that got to be that way.
No, ma'am, it's called, I did this about 2:00 in the morning, and I probably failed to see it, but I had put it out there, so I can review that and help with the space.
Councilmember Innocent, that is the deal, isn't it? There's, there's different requirements for the different, like, ones from planning and zoning, one that you have to be in a historic home, one's commercial, yeah.
Now, the old ordinance used to say that you had to be a resident of the city. I don't know if that's been changed in the new ordinance or not, Jen.
No, sir, it still requires to be a resident.
So you could take the ETJ out of that one?
Um, I got that, I think, from the ordinance, but I will go back and verify.
So from my understanding, all these different requirements are actually what's in the bylaws now, from my understanding?
They're either in the bylaws or the ordinance. And that's what makes this complicated, because it's not just you're a resident, and it's not just that you live in the ETJ. In some instances, you have to be in the ETJ and be in the Bastrop Independent School District, and in some cases, you can live in the ETJ, but not more than five, I think it's two miles.
Five miles.
From the city limits. That would be in the housing authority. So this was quite, quite the challenge to be able to get all of these so that you know what you're even eligible to apply for.
So my question is on the BEDC board, you don't even have to live in the country?
It does not specify. It specifies management or executive evaluation. Is there one position?
There's five that, there's seven members, you have to live inside the city, and there's two that are allowed to be in the ETJ.
But you can be a resident or, or ETJ. That's, okay.
I just noticed that one didn't have any resident at all, anywhere. That's all my questions, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Any other comments on the application? Okay. So the way this is gonna work is the newsletter, based on the conversation we had on 5A, will contain that information, and then the new application will be inside the newsletter. So everybody will get a copy of the application. And our goal is for those to be mailed out July 1st. City Manager, do you have any other need for direction from us at all? Okay.
I'd like to applaud the city manager for the work on this. It had to be elaborate.
Thank you very much, City Manager, for doing the, lots and lots of information. It's in, and some of it's kind of hard to find, and she did a great job of getting through all of that. Okay, we're on staff and board reports. We're gonna receive a presentation and update on the Bastrop 1832 Farmers Market, Ms. O'Brien. We're on item 6A.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take some time to update you guys. Last August, the city council approved a property use agreement with the Bastrop 1832 Farmers Market for the property across the street, and they have done a tremendous job in the last year and actually in the last 24 months since we began working with them at the Main Street program. And I can't be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Dick Smith, who has spent countless hours with them. I'm gonna grab the clip. Just a brief overview of the property use agreement. It was approved last August and specifically states that the, the city is interested in having a community farmers market that benefits our residents, visitors, and the city as a whole. We, at that time, took over the expense for maintenance of the property and utilities, and the farmers market is now paying a monthly fee to the city. The lease changed significantly that it does allow other users to come in and contact the city and be able to rent that facility if it does meet their needs. And of course, I sit on the board, but they do all of the hard work. So the lease renews automatically every year, and it can be canceled by either party at any time. Just a little bit about the, the market, they have recently gone through and updated their vision and their mission, and I really like the fact that they actually put in some goals with some numbers so that they know where they're headed and what they want to do. So they're going to work to continue to increase the number of vendors, increase sales, which is important for them and our local economy, and of cour-, of course, to increase the number of folks that come in and out of the market on Saturday mornings, and then continue a lot of the work they do being involved in the community. They updated their business plan. Again, this year, we did that about 12 months ago and then did it again this spring. I think that it's important that any organization goes through and, and looks at those things, set their performance targets and goals, and set targets for recruitment, cleared, clearly defined action steps, identify additional partnership opportunities, and they're in the process of updating the bylaws right now, and then, of course, outlining their promotions, marketing, PR, and advertising plan. And the, we required in the property use agreement, they provide financial accountability and steady growth, so they're an open book when it comes to that, and you'll see that they have made some progress. There's a detailed report in your council packet that the board put together for you all.
And, Ms. O'Brien, if you go back a page, because those are really hard numbers for the audience to read. But I would just point out that it's the, it's, they've seen an 18% growth so far year to date over last year.
Yep. Which I think is tremendous and speaks highly to the hard work and dedication that they're all putting in. And this year, in an effort to continue the vendor recruitment and the retention, they updated the membership statement and the application, updated the actual rules and regulations, and also the, the way that new members are approved to become a member of the market. They host an annual membership meeting every year, which has really delicious food, if you're ever interested in attending, and also created guidelines for accountability. It's unbelievable the amount of regulations and licenses and permits that are required when you're in this industry by various entities with the state. And so, so they're, so they're a great job of communicating all of those with all of the vendors so that makes sure they're doing everything they should. And they are available to go out and do farm inspections as well. And just a little bit about the community support, they're very actively involved with the food pantry, so they can act a role in our My Bastrop Small Business Revolution, participated with the Down Home Ranch with a point set out of sale this spring, and I try not to adopt any of the puppies that we get out there on Saturday mornings. So they've got a lot of organizations that they work hand-in-hand with to support. And they know a lot of fun stuff this year, one of the, doing some cooking demonstrations onsite and making some samples that they can hand out to folks using some of the products available in the market. And they do take the, the Lone Star Card Program, which I think is an important benefit to the community, and, and they've got actually a little library area where you can check out information, and they continue to update about how, the importance of various products that they serve and buying and shopping locally. Lots of special events, they kicked off the holiday seasons with the Christmas at the farmers market, and then recently hosted the, the May Fest at the market and 10th anniversary birthday party, but it was really hot. And they were a venue at the music festival, and have done some chili cook-offs, and they just recently, the last few months, have started to have live music on a regular basis on Saturday mornings. So, and we think that's a tremendous benefit to the community and the market itself. And giving out the message, they have a very active social media presence on Facebook. They've recently revamped and updated their entire website. You guys may remember at one point, there used to be an old cistern over at the property, and so we're in the process of looking into how we can revamp that signage area right there so make it kind of an artistic statement. And so they've found another cistern, and we're looking for an artist who can work on it for us, and then we'll go fill out our, you know, if we need a permit or all that good stuff. We're looking into all of that. So that's all I have. I know that there are lots of very amazing farmers market representatives back behind me. If you guys have any specific questions, it's just been almost a year, and so we wanted to give you, oh, I forgot, I thought I was done. Here's the market management and board of directors. Jeff Long with Bastrop Gardens. Vice President and Market Manager Robert was since at Hill Farm, took over about a year and a half ago. Mike and Kathy and Patrick and Leslie are all the vendor board members. And then we also thought it was important, maybe did the, the business plan to have some non-vendor representation, and so Ms. Lewis, who's back behind me, and myself, and then, of course, Mr. Lewis, who is a secretary treasurer and publicity, and I can tell you she keeps everybody running and operational. And that is the end. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and I know the ladies in the back are happy to speak as well. Council, do you have any comments? Councilmember Jones?
Are you happy with the way everything's going? So none of the issues that we were having a couple of years ago, they're, they're over?
They're over. And you know, I think we always have room to grow, and so I think what we're doing and being able to take a look on an annual basis on how far we've come, what else can we do, I think is important. But I think that they're doing a tremendous job and, and working really hard, and it's a great place to go and spend your, your Saturday morning if you haven't been by there. It's really hot right now, and so I think it's even more important to go out there and show your support for them because this, this part of the summer tends to be a little bit more difficult when you're running a farmers market. Councilmember Innocent?
In my opinion, all you have to do is look at the three-year sales comparison and see that all the hard work is paying off. And y'all are really moving on.
I'm not doing anything, but you call it, so. Councilmember Rogers, do you have any comments?
I just wish it opened at nine.
I have told them that, but they, you know, they have to get all the produce ready. I said, I'm done running my Saturday morning.
I know, but I have to get all my chocolate ready, so I need to get there so I can go there.
I know, we'll bring it back up again, but thank you, Council. Well, I agree with Councilmember Innocent, and 18% growth year-on-year, year-to-date is phenomenal. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and we'll see you guys next year. Let us know if you need anything. Thank you very much. You have to come speak at the mic, and I'm happy for you to do that, but they can't hear you at home if you don't speak into the mic.
Hi, I'm Lois McElwain, and I'm on the board at the market, and this weekend, we're having our tomato fest, and so we encourage you all to come out and buy tomatoes from us. Think you'll enjoy those.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to item number seven, citizens' comments. I have one person signed up for citizens' comments. If anyone else is in the audience and wishes to speak, please make sure you get something filled out. Tammy Bell Johnson? Johnson? Johnson, I bet. Johnson?
My name is Tammy Bell Johnson, and I am served as the treasurer on the Bastrop Jim Teeth Committee. And I'm here this evening to talk about our wonderful celebration that is going to be held this weekend. As you all know, Jim Teeth is held in Bastrop the third weekend of every, third weekend of of June every year, and it is to honor the emancipation of slaves in Texas. We are very excited to announce that this weekend is going to be packed full of fun activities that we want everybody to know about. This is the 31st year of the celebration in Bastrop, and the event is going to kick off on Friday evening with a banquet to be held at the Bastrop Convention Center. We are so excited to be there at that venue. We are going to be honoring individuals in the community, in the area of community service. We have 10 individuals that we're going to be honoring. We are also going to be honoring our youth of the year. We are going to be recognizing our two scholarship recipients, and we are also going to be recognizing our Parade Marshal. We will have a silent auction that's going to be going on during the event, and that is going to be from 6:30 to 11:30. There will be a dance after all of the evenings takes place. Then, on Saturday morning, we are going to be meeting at Fisherman's Park, where the parade participants will be able to assemble beginning at 8 o'clock. And yes, we still want people to participate in the parade if you're interested. There are spots open. The parade will begin at 10, and it will presume down Main Street, come up Walnut Street, and end at the Kerr Center, where the emancipation program will be held at 11 o'clock. The best event, and the event that everybody always looks forward to, is the street dance. It starts at 8 o'clock, and again, it's not going to disappoint. This year, we will have Ms. Dre and 21 Soul as our headlining group, and it is going to be a fantastic event. We want everybody to come out and bring their lawn chairs. It's going to be fantastic. We want to thank the City of Bastrop for supporting us. We appreciate everything that you have done, and we want you to know that it is going to be a great weekend, and we look forward to everyone coming out and joining us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to make citizen comments? Any questions for Ms. Johnson? I think, I know I'll see you Friday night. I was looking forward to it. Counsel Member Peterson, you said you had a comment you wanted to make?
It's just a quick comment I did make in my council report. I would just like to give kudos to our City Manager and our City Staff, especially the Director of Public Works. I must say, Gill's Branch has not looked that good in over 60 years, and I'm really, 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 really proud of us.
Thank you, Counsel Member Peterson. There was a time that Gill's Branch was not a good subject to bring up, you know? And I know we're not completely done, but that's awesome. 60 years, huh? That's fantastic. All right, I am moving right along. We're on the consent agenda. There's only one item on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and read it. Madam Secretary, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the May 22, 2018 meeting. The meeting minutes are in your packet. Counsel, do you have any questions or any comments on the minutes? I'm happy to take a motion.
A move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Innis, a second from Counsel Member Peterson. With no discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Counsel Member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Member Innis?
Yes.
Counsel Member Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel, for that. Okay, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. We're on 9A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-43 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the City Manager to execute amendments on behalf of the city modifying the deadlines for construction for projects funded by the 2013 Funding Agreement and the 2015 380 Agreement with the Bastrop Fine Arts Guild and establishing an effective date. For Counsel and for the audience, I will remind you that the City Council had a joint meeting with BEDC on March 22 and discussed the three contracts. There was a contract with BEDC, and there are two contracts with the city, with the city, with the City Council. Those are the two contracts that we are talking about tonight. One of them is for $100,000. It was drafted, it's kind of weird. It was drafted in 2011, but it wasn't signed until May 22 of 2013, so that's one of the agreements. That's $100,000. And then, there was a second agreement that was signed on February 18 of 2015. That agreement was for $300,000. I think most of you, I think all of you were at the March 22 meeting, and so with the input that the City Manager and the City Attorney got from that meeting, you have before you some, two different agreements that are making amendments. City Manager, do you have comments you want to make on these?
Mayor and Counsel, at that meeting, you instructed me to work with the President of the Guild to get exact language and make sure that we were clear, and that language reads as follows. The exterior of the four silos will be refurbished, walls and roofs will be patched, and doors will function. One silo will be equipped with glass-blowing equipment and an outside bleacher covered by an awning for purposes of viewing the glass-blowing production. The other three silos will be usable as unconditioned space for art demonstrations and classes suitable for unconditioned space, such as, but not limited to, sculpture, woodworking, ceramics, alcohol inks. TCEQ requirements will be met in the reconditioning of silo space. Interior silo space will maintain their historical look to complement the outdoor space and the modern design of the Art Center. The sculpture garden is substantially complete. The stage will be covered, and minor landscaping such as plantings along the sidewalk will be installed. And that was language to clarify the project's scope. Both amendments have a completion date of September 30 of this year. Staff has had a meeting with the volunteers and the paid staff of the Lost Pines Art Center, and we anticipate either at the end of this week or the first of next week getting permit applications with all of the necessary designs. They anticipate it'll take about a month and a half. If that's the case, it should be through by mid-August, well in advance of the September 30 deadline.
Counsel questions or comments? Counsel Member Jones, you have your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Counsel Member Innis?
Who will ultimately determine compliance?
I didn't mean to throw you. Well, it's, you know, we will be able, as a part of the inspection process, to go over and make sure that the intent of the words on this page are met. As far as the stage is concerned, all we lack in the completion of that is just getting some copies of some design specifications. So, given this language, I feel confident that staff will be able to go over there based on the building permit that they asked for, review it, and then at the completion of that, deem that they've met the intent of our building codes, and this document and issue a certificate of occupancy on those silos sufficient that they can now start being used for classroom space.
That works for me. One other question.
Absolutely, Counsel.
And I just want to reiterate this. It does say this, but when, in item four, additional public money, the Guild will not be eligible for additional funding with public money until the purpose of this agreement has been met, that means any hot funds, et cetera, et cetera.
It's interesting that you and I both had the same question, and I asked Alan, but it was only a few hours ago. Did you have an opportunity to take a look at that?
And that is my understanding of that language, is it's regarding the payment of further hot funds until the September 30 factors are satisfied?
Thank you.
Okay, so I had a question, though, because the first agreement, because there are a lot of similarities between the two agreements, but they're not exact duplicates. And in the first agreement, and Alan, I'm sorry if I'm throwing you for a loop, but in the first agreement, it says, and I'm on the second page of the staff report, that successful operation, that the Guild shall successfully operate the Lost Pines Art Center for a minimum of two years. The City Manager has noted that the certificate of occupancy for the building was March 1 of 2017, so operating successfully will go through February 28 of 2019. So, I don't know if they are in compliance when they finish and get a CO for the silos, or have they not really finished the agreement, the first agreement, until the two-year period?
I don't read it that way. The default that currently exists stems from 4.3, where they indicated that they would complete Phase 3 by December 31 of 2017. So, that's the default you're curing. But this agreement, as well as the second one, has additional stipulations that has to be met. This one has an ongoing concern of two years. The next agreement has, I believe, a 10-year window, and if they were to not be an ongoing concern for a period of time, then they have a schedule of how much of that, of the original investment would have to be paid back.
Well, I don't read it that way, because the second agreement, it says voluntary termination by the Guild. So, to me, that's not us saying you're in violation. That's if they say, "We don't want to mess with you guys anymore," then I thought that's when that kicked in. But the first agreement says, "In addition to the terms and conditions related to employment as set forth in Section 6, to avoid an act of default, the Guild shall successfully operate for a minimum of two years." So, I, so I'm not sure. I understand that the specific default that we are addressing was the completion of the construction, but are there still a potential default until February 28 of 2019 or not?
Yes, ma'am. And in the second agreement, default could occur, ceasing to operate the center in the city, no longer remaining a 501(c)(3), or for other reasons determined by the Guild. So, the second agreement required a, essentially, an 11-year operation period. The first agreement required a two-year operation agreement. So, there is an opportunity for another default to occur. If they should terminate operations before December 31, I'm sorry, February 29 of 2018, then they could default both agreements. If they operate after December or February 28 of 2019, then they may only be in default of the second agreement until March of 2028.
And then, the default, then, then that's when we use the chart of the 10 years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, backing up to Counsel Member Innis's question about the hot funds, if we adopt these amendments and give them additional construction time, when they are completed, when there is a CO issued for the silo, they are no longer in default, and so they would then be eligible for additional public funds until such time that hopefully they do not default, but that when they, if they, when they get the construction done, if the extension's given, then they're back in good standing?
Yes, ma'am. And I, just for clarifications, they're eligible to apply. This body determines who receives hot funds, under whatever conditions, whenever. So, what, the way this is styled, at the completion of, at the end of June 30, if they've completed the construction, issued a CO, they are no longer in default of Section 4.3.
City Manager, you said June 30, but your brain really meant September.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, what that will allow them to do is to apply. There is no guarantee they will receive money just because they applied.
Okay, and I, I believe that those two things should be separate. We should handle this agreement, take care of this agreement, and then have a hot funds discussion when we're talking about hot funds. And I believe that's the way it's posted for tonight. Is everybody comfortable with that? So, back to the point of the Guild will not be eligible for additional funding with public money until the purpose of this agreement has been met. It certainly means there might be another major agreement like this mentioned, and to your point, they can always apply for hot funds. Just, I know there's a lot of rumors and lots of conversations going on out there. They did not apply and did not receive any hot funds last year. And I know there's some discussion that they got a big old check, but they did not, and they were not in the hot funds. So...
So, don't, but I thought we had a, you know, you're saying this body is in charge. I mean, ultimately, I guess we are, but don't we have a hot fund committee now through the visit?
We'll be approving that.
We approve it, but we have somebody that goes through everything and recommends, right?
And in a separate discussion, we'll be talking about the essential assets and how to do things. We haven't completely finished the hot funds discussion for next year. Okay, so, City Manager, do you feel like we're, do you have any, are you concerned that we're voting on, about to vote on something that we've gotten off and we're not, or do you think we're flaring on this? Do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Counsel Member Rogers?
Okay, well, on one section, you said they had to operate successfully. Exactly what is a successful business? I mean, I just think there should be some clarification. I mean, there's some people that have a hobby that consider it a successful business, and they're so, so I was just curious about that. My second question was, what happens? And we all, you know, we all pray that everything's settled by the end of September, when it come, but I didn't see anything that happens if, let's say, they don't do it by September. What is the, I didn't see where it written, it's written that if something happens.
So, I, and I, there's been, that conversation has taken place, and the fact of the matter is, if they don't finish by September 30, they're in default, and we're right where we were on December 31 of last year, when they were in default. And so, this body, when they are in default, has all of the same opportunities that we had before. We can extend the date again, or we can demand repayment, or we can do something in between. That is my understanding.
That is correct. And Counsel Member Rogers, successful is in the eye of the beholder. What I will tell you is that they have active rentals in their space. They are open during business hours. They routinely have classes offered on Saturday. They have Art After Dark, that is the first Saturday of every month after the first Friday Art Walk. They are actively bringing in artists. They change their art displays on a monthly basis. So, by all conditions, I would deem it a success. One of the challenges that always happens is going into any type of contractual relationship, you don't worry about the ambiguity, but the City Attorney and I will both tell you the devil's in the details when you try to get out of one. And so, successful in this case is in the eye of the beholder, but I think most of us have been to a number of activities at the Art Center that suggest that it is successfully operating.
Oh, and I apologize, I wasn't meaning that. I didn't feel it was successful. I was just saying that in the details of the wording, I would have preferred that it gave some direction in that. I totally believe that it's successful. I wasn't meaning for you to explain that. I was just saying that maybe in the future, get a little more detail of what we feel is a successful. So, going forward, the next council will be wondering what the successful is. So, I wasn't doubting their success, I was just pointing out the wording.
I don't disagree with that at all. This is the document that was written in 11 and wasn't signed until 13, and it says specifically that "The successful operation shall be in the sole discretion of the city." And I believe that's why the City Manager's saying it's in the eye of the beholder, because it's, that's all it said. Yeah. I think we've all kind of learned that contracts are, generally, nobody's reaching for them when things are going good. It's when things go wrong that suddenly everyone gets real interested in reading all of it. But I appreciate your comments. Does anybody have any questions for the City Attorney, for the City Manager, or anything further that you wish to discuss? It is my understanding with the way that the agenda item is written is that there is one resolution that will cover both agreements, and you guys have those, that document is in the packet.
You go.
Somebody go.
I move to approve this. Once again, it's been a lot of hard work for our city attorney and our city manager to make these, make this all work for us. And I think it's a win-win, and I think we should move on, and so I move to approve.
Have a question to approve? Is that a second, Councilmember? I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. I would, Councilmember Rogers brought up the point of, gee, what's going to happen on October 1st, and for anybody involved in this construction, I, from the bottom of my heart, hope that we are not discussing this again. And I would think that the ramifications would not go well. Really encourage you to finish the building, so we can, as a community, get this behind us and move forward. So, and I have every reason to believe that they're going to be able to do that, and I hope very much that that happens. So any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. As promised, I have four people signed up for 9G, and I am going to take 9G next, so those four people can go home. And then I'm going to survey the audience and see if I can figure out the other ones I can do, so people don't have to stay for a long time. So we're going to 9G, which is, I'll be reading, I'll read the item, and then Ms. Bills will make her presentation. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, rezoning lots 1 and 2 of the Lee Jackson and Fowler subdivision, 1.717 acres from Form Base Code Character Zone CMU, Commercial Mixed Use, to C1, Commercial 1, and 0.398 acres of Bastrop Town Tract Abstract 11, and 2.046 acres of the Building Block 12, east of Water Street, from C2 Commercial to C1 Commercial, located at the northeast corner of State Highway 95 and Chestnut Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, including a severability clause establishing an effective date, and move to include on the June 26, 2018 Agenda for Second Reading. Ms. Bills is going to make her presentation. I'll then give council an opportunity to ask her questions. I will then open the public hearing and call the people who have signed up to speak in the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll deliberate and make a decision. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So the item, before you deny it, is a request for rezoning for what is now five parcels at the corner of Chestnut and SH 95. Currently, it's split zoning. The first two parcels are commercial mixed use in the Form Base Code overlay, and then C2 Commercial 2 zoning, which is our standard zoning code. The applicant wishes to develop this as one tract, and to do so, it has to be under one zoning district to develop the site holistically. As I said, this is the corner of 95 and Chestnut, and you've got that dedicated right turn lane right here off, going from Chestnut onto 95. This area's a little old, but all these houses, these were previously residential houses, have all been demolished since this area was taken. There is one lot on this block that is not included in this project, but that will remain. The future land use for this corner is neighborhood commercial, which allows for the CMU, C1, and C2 zoning, that is being, the C1 zoning is being requested at this location. So Chapter 14, Section 10 of the Code of Ordinances includes the reasons why you can amend the zoning code. The first is to correct an error, which is not the case in this instance. Second is to recognize change or changing conditions or circumstances in a particular locality. In this instance, the applicant plans to put, plot the five tracks into one and develop it as one site, so that prompts the rezoning. To recognize changes in technology, style of living, or manner of conducting business, which does not apply in this case. And to change property to uses in accordance with the approved conference of plan, and the C1, Commercial 1 zoning is consistent with the future land use designation of neighborhood commercial. The code also lists a number of determining factors to consider. One, the first is whether the uses permitted in the proposed change will be appropriate in the immediate area concerned and the relationship to the general area and the city as a whole. One, this corner is already zoned for commercial uses. This would be, in some ways, a parallel shift, because the end-use of a fuel station is allowed in all three zoning categories. It's also, commercial uses are an appropriate use at a major roadway intersection, such as this. The second is whether the proposed change is in accordance with existing or proposed infrastructure. In this instance, this use will not adversely affect public schools, streets, or utilities in the area. And any impact that the end-user would have will be addressed during the plotting phase, so any improvements to the streets or infrastructure will have to be made at that time. The amount of vacant land currently classified for similar development in the vicinity or elsewhere in the city, and any special circumstances that may make a substantial part of such vacant land unavailable for development. There is vacant land classified for commercial development in the vicinity and other places within the city limits, but some of it is hindered by lack of available utilities, and also requires longer plotting and development processes. Additionally, this is east of SH 95, which, most of this area is in the Lost Pines Habitat Conservation Plan, which is something that the developers already been able to look into and secure a permit for this area. The lot also has some pretty significant grade that will have to be addressed for that corner to be developed. Also, the recent rate at which land is being developed in the same zoning classification as the requests, and over the last 10 years, commercial tracks along 95 and Chestnut have been developing at a steady rate. The other three corners at this intersection are currently developed, the movie station, the gas station to the south, and then the strip center to the east, south, west. And then how other areas designated for similar development will be or unlikely to be affected by the proposed amendment if approved. From staff perspective, this is, C1 zoning classification is actually a lower, zoning classification allows less uses than the C2 zoning that's on half the tract, and the uses are fairly comparable between the CMU and the C1 zoning. The big consideration between those two zoning districts is that the commercial mixed use zoning is in the Form Base Code, which is concerned primarily with form first, and then the use second. So it's more concerned with how is the building being constructed in relationship to the roads and other property. Our standard zoning code that has C1 and C2 is more concerned with separation of uses from other surrounding properties, and how you're, it kind of has broad strokes of how to separate a commercial use from a residential use. The staff recommendation was, is to approve the rezoning for the reasons stated. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at the end of last month, the commission recommended denial of the rezoning request by a vote of 5 to 2. The main concern of the commission was they did not want to remove this area from the Form Base Code. They felt that the Form Base Code Committee had looked at this extensively, and that this corner should be included in the Form Base Code. They also felt that this, that a convenience store and fuel station use was not an appropriate use for a gateway intersection to the city. And then several members of the public also stated concerns about the existing traffic and the future traffic that'll be generated by a fuel station. So after the council will review and hold a public hearing, it'll take a vote of four out of five of the total membership to overrule the denial by planning and zoning. So in this case, I believe it'll take all four members of council that are here tonight to approve that rezoning request.
A couple of things I want to, thank you for clarifying that. So we are clear, planning and zoning denied this. So if we uphold planning and zoning denying, it takes three votes to deny it, because we would just be saying, and if we deny it, then do we have to deny it? Do we do it, deny it twice, or if we deny it, it goes, it's dead, and then they can make a new application if they so choose to planning and zoning? If four out of four voting members, which is all of the council members here tonight, if you vote to approve it and go against what PNC recommended, but vote to approve it, it will take all four of you, then it would be, it would have to be read twice, and it would take four votes the second time.
Yes.
The other thing that I just want to clarify, and I, at this point, not expressing opinion one way or another, I just want us to be extremely clear about what we're voting on, and that is, this zoning change is not a part of the proposed development deal. If this zoning is changed and that deal goes away, the zoning is changed. It's not a contingent factor. So the conversation that we're having, I need you to not think solely of it's going to be a filling station, and that's the deal before us. This is changing the zoning forever and allowing any of the uses on that list, because sometimes people ask for a zoning request, they think they're going to do something, that deal falls through, and then somebody comes back with a completely different use, and people are like, "But that's not what we voted on." Well, I want you to be clear, that's exactly what you're voting on. And it would be that all of those parcels can be any of those C1 uses. So I want us to be clear that once, and then if the property's sold, it stays, that zoning, until a time that it is, they apply for rezoning, and that is approved by planning and zoning and council. So I just want you to understand the extent of the decision that you're making. With that, I don't want to open the public hearing until council has had an opportunity to ask Ms. Bills any questions about kind of the logistics and the details. Councilmember Ennis?
If this resolve, if this whole plat was CMU, would this particular structure be able to be placed there?
The applicant does not feel that they can meet the requirements of the CMU district.
But the use is allowed.
The use is allowed, yes. The use should be allowed. It's the form that is hindering. So under the Form Base Code for this area, it requires that you bring any buildings up to the street frontage on both sides, and then keep parking behind. So in the case of a fuel station, that means your convenience store building will have to be along this frontage, and the pumps would have to actually be pushed closer to the neighborhood, in this case. Additionally, you've also got, I think, there's some grade that they're going to have to cut into here, which I think is, they worked through several renderings before they asked for the zoning, trying to see if they could make the CMU work, and the applicant didn't feel they could afford this particular use.
Thank you.
Clearly, what you just said, they didn't feel like they could afford, what did you say?
They didn't feel that they could make the area work with the curvature of the lot. You already got a significant setback, just the text-out right of there. You're going to, they're going to have some challenges trying to get driveways, because these are both going to be text-out controlled roads for driver access. And then there's topology. This is actually a fairly large retaining wall to the highway right now.
So talk to me about the access points, because I know that text-out's pretty strict when you're at an intersection, how those access points work there, if you mind.
Yeah, this is access points, and I'm not an expert by any stretch of imagination, but it has to do with the speed of the road, and then the distance from other intersections. So, and that'll be something text-out has to determine if they get those driveways onto 95 or Chestnut. But they could, but we would control any driveways onto CP Johnson Lane or Spring Street.
So is the way that if this was developed under the new form, how would that access have to work from Spring and CP Johnson?
Potentially, it may have to work that way under either form.
Either way, actually, it might have to work that way.
Yeah. That's kind of a separate issue entirely, but that does feed into the, how are they going to lay out the site, is where they can get those driveways in.
Counsel, I've watched the planning and zoning meeting, and I don't, some of you may have watched it, and some of you may have watched the video, and I just wanted to have clarity, Jennifer, Ms. Bills, sorry. My understanding is, the applicant spoke with staff, and then came before planning and zoning, but there was not, sometimes, I know, and Councilmember Ennis may agree with this, when we sat on planning and zoning, often, if there was a complicated case like this, they would workshop with the board to see if, you know, maybe we should do, can it be CMU with some variances, and kind of, what's the problem that you have, and what's the problem that we can solve? My word for that would be, is there some common sense in the middle of this between going to a C1 zoning on the whole deal? Is that true, that there was no workshop held with the variance on the board?
No, we didn't hold any workshops.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Any other questions from Ms. Bills? Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I have a question, because I know that planning and zoning denied it, but the staff recommends it. Is there a big thing of why the staff is, you know, I'm saying, you guys are on both sides, so I'd like to know what yours, what the staff is thinking of why they'd like to go ahead, because I can see what the, you know, what planning and zoning's problems were.
Yeah. The primary reason staff was recommending approval is, one, you do have to have, this entire tract is probably going to be developed together. Having the CMU just on this front part really kind of left an area that probably, at that corner, is not going to be able to be developed on its own. So for to go to one zoning, we recommended C1, because the applicant under the CMU zoning was going to have to request a number of variances, and it's preferable to change the zoning rather than do variances, because variances require a necessary hardship that you cannot meet the intent of the code any other way. And so staff would not be able to support variances for changing the building layout or signage or any of those things from the CMU code.
But Ms. Bills, just for clarity, staff may not be able to support it, but it can still be approved. Is that correct?
The zoning board could, but they would have to prove the necessary hardship.
The point being, if they do a workshop and come up with a middle ground, are you saying they can't approve it?
Zoning Board of Adjustment versus Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, different board. And a different set of criteria.
Planning and zoning doesn't grant variances?
Not over hardships.
Not for zoning variances, no.
Site plan variances.
I mean, is there a reason why this couldn't be workedshopped, so that, because, you know, clearly, we want to promote business, but we had a huge group of citizens spend a tremendous amount of time coming up with what they wanted this to look like? And I don't think it's, you know, I mean, we're split already on this. I don't know why we can't just send this, or if we could recommend that this go to workshop, I'm happy, I'm the representative for planning and zoning, I'm happy to represent, or not represent, but be there with the council to bring something back, and versus just doing all this tonight. Is there a way we can do that? I mean, is there some sort of, I guess we have a presentation from the owners as well, but I just personally think that if, I would like to go forward with a workshop. I don't know what you guys see here, but...
I do, thank you, Councilmember Jones, I think that's a great point. I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we do need to hold a public hearing tonight, and I've got several folks signed up to speak, so we may need to have that and then come back to this. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, we did a lot of work on Form Base Code, and that was one of the areas we wanted to look decent, like I said, it's a gateway to Bastrop. We wanted it to look well, but to move that out, and then have to move stores right up in that corner, that's not going to, not going to work. So we're going to have to workshop this until we can come up with a resolution.
I appreciate that, and I do think that that might be where we're going, but I do need to hold... need to hold the public hearing, and quite frankly, I just can't make my civil engineering brain not kick in. The concerns that I have, I don't think it's going to be no small chore to get the driveway cuts from the highway department.
I agree.
Secondly, it is completely different if you are pulling out, if you're across the street, and you're pulling out and going up the hill, and you're pulling out where somebody's been at a stoplight, and they too are going up the hill. We already know people come over the hill at a, not necessarily following the speed limit, and there's already problems with folks that are slowing down slightly to turn right and go north onto 95, and now if they're slamming on their brakes to turn into a driveway, I can't imagine that that's going to be working out any better. So what the city manager mentioned to me, and I think it is an excellent idea, is if we're going to workshop it, I believe it would be a good idea to not workshop it until this configuration is discussed with Tech Dot, because there is no point in us spending a bunch of time on it if Tech Dot's not going to give them the driveway cuts anyway.
I agree. I think that's fundamental.
So, sounds like we're all on the same page, but I do, I think I'm legally bound, and we want to have the public hearing, and I've got several folks signed up to speak. So with that, I'm officially opening, council, are you okay with that? And then we'll close it, and then we'll talk. Okay, so I'm officially opening the public hearing. The first person I have signed up to speak is David Meyer, Jr.
I'm mayor, city manager, council members. David Meyer, I'm representing QuickTrip. I work in development for QuickTrip, and I've actually worked for QuickTrip for nine years now. I know it doesn't look like it, you got probably, I thought I was 16, I'm actually 28, oddly enough. I actually started when I was 19 as a part-time clerk in St. Louis. At that time, I was just trying to get as many part-time jobs as I could to afford college. Little did I know, at that time, I stumbled upon an extremely great company that invests in its employees. By investing, they promote 99% of their employees internally, which is unheard of. They have tuition reimbursement, so they're able to pay for some of my college. And on top of that, they just continually invest in us, and they give us ESOP sharing, so they make every employee an owner of the company. So you further invest into the company, and by that, that trickles down into taking care of the customers. So it's kind of neat. So with QuickTrip, we're in 11 states, we have 800 stores. Hopefully after tonight, we'll have 801 in Bassdrop. So it's a great company. And so, kind of to segue why we're here, what we do early on in our due diligence process, and we try to meet with the city as soon as we can. And so with this one, I believe, Jennifer, we met with you eight months ago, seven or eight months ago. And for our product, in order for this to work, you know, we looked at the zoning. So we brought a proposed site plan to Jennifer, and we had to kind of shoot holes through it. Does this meet the intent? Does this meet ordinances? With this, there are two different zonings, CMU and the C2 heavily, are heavy industrial uses. In order to move forward, we would like to propose development on all five of the parcels. In order to do that, we have to have one consistent zoning, which would be the C, which would be one consistent zoning. And from looking at the CMU base zoning in C2, C2 for us, it was a heavily, heavy industrial use. We didn't like the idea of putting C2 on the entire five parcels. CMU for our use, doesn't make sense to have the building pushed up in the corner in our product, in the neighbors' front yards. So when we met with Jennifer, we tried to come up with some kind of middle ground. And so that middle ground was C1. So that would reduce 49 uses and 31 heavily industrial uses on the property as well. So with stripping those uses, and with getting our product and 100% of our business out of our neighbors' yards. And so that's kind of where we came to that middle ground with the C1. And so I am here for any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Sure. Thank you.
Council, any questions for Mr. Meyer? Okay, the second person is Carlton Harris.
I'm mayor and city council. I reside on 1103 CP Johnson Lane. One of the things I want to say first, and I married into the family, and so there are four generations that have lived up on that property. So to me, it's a historical point, because they've been here that long. But you've addressed some of the things that I have issues with. Part of it is, is going to be the traffic flow, as you were saying, when people are coming off of, from the state park down that hill, and especially on a holiday like Christmas, Thanksgiving, I can't hardly get onto Chestnut or 95. So putting a station there would increase the amount of traffic that would flow there, and then I don't see it being feasible anywhere to put an interestway until, unless they're coming on Spring Street, which means that if they do that, now they're at my mother-in-law's front door, and my sister-in-law's front door, if you go, because it's going to be right in the neighborhood. We have very little traffic up there, very little noise, but now, from what they're saying is, the interestway is going to be on Spring Street, which means now, we're going to have an influx of traffic in a neighborhood that was once quiet and peaceful. Now we're going to hear noise almost 24 hours, if it's a 24-hour store. I don't see it being, benefit you to us as neighbors to have something of that magnitude in our front door. You wake up every morning, you're going to look at a service station. That's a beautiful sight. But the other thing that I say, see, is also, that with Buc-E's and Michelle, your traffic is flowing away from the city. This is going to come right into the city, and especially during the school time, you're going to have parents coming in in the morning with their kids, and it's not going to be in that curve where it comes off of Chestnut to get onto 95. Oftentimes, when I've come home at night, people don't yield for that stop sign. I've almost gotten hit several times. So again, everything with this would increase traffic flow. And so whether it's zone, whatever, my main concern is, I don't think the station should go there. For number one, it's going to be an eyesore into the entrance of the city of Bassdrop. One of the other things I, and you mentioned Tech Dot, I think there should be a traffic survey done over a period of time to kind of see how much traffic is coming in that area, to see is, if it's going to increase over the, because I know traffic has increased over the past five, 10 years. So there's a continuous growth of traffic in that area, and to add something like that that's going to increase traffic, doesn't make any sense to me, especially me being a neighbor living in that area, having to get in and out of that. So that's the thing that I'm concerned about, the amount of traffic. There are other things I think we can put there that would be neighborhood friendly. I know they probably purchased the land, but we need something there. Since it's right in front of our front doors, we need something there that's going to be neighborhood friendly, and not bring in something like that. Okay?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. So you live there?
Yes.
And you've made a really good point, which is, you want something there that's neighborhood friendly. Have you discussed with your neighbors or with your family what that would look like? Do you have any sort of expectation or idea for that?
Not currently. We have not decided to, because I don't know what point we are with this right now. I don't know if you all have said, okay, we're going to build it, or if you're going to say it's not going to be built, but I think we even suggested, we would even take duplexes. I think one time somebody mentioned something about maybe duplexes. Where you won't have that much traffic, you would have set traffic of homeowners there. But to put something that's going to bring people in and out on a continuous basis, and oh my goodness, 4:00 in the morning, I can hear the dump truck coming to the shell getting their dumpsters. Can you imagine now it's going to be on my front door, and that guy coming in 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and he's dumping his stuff? I hear that all night long. So again, I don't think it's neighborhood friendly. That's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I just want to say one thing. I really want you all to think about that. I want you to think about what this neighborhood friendly look like to you, and call somebody on the council and talk to us about that, because I think it's a big deal, you know? And I think that you live there.
Yeah.
And I just really want you to think about what that looks like.
Okay.
So that, you know, because it looks like to me, it looks like to me, we're headed for a workshop here. I don't know, but...
How much time do we have? Does...
I'll let you talk to the mayor about...
Yeah, which time?
For you to talk tonight?
No, no, not tonight, as far as sitting and discussing what we would think is...
We'll talk about that after the public hearing, but there's, you know, there's two sides to that. I'm sure government moves slowly, and I'm certain that the folks that are making the deal have a time that they're either going to do the deal or not. So, and that the other thing, I think we've had an agreement that Tech Dot is a key conversation to all of this, and I don't know if they'll answer real quick. It may be real easy to answer. It may, you know, it may take, be quicker, it may take a little bit of time. But in my opinion, the highway department's comments on those driveway cuts is a huge part of the conversation.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Frank Vanaschet? Okay. Does not want to speak. Marvin Beck?
Mayor, manager, council, I'm Marvin Beck. I own the first three lots that are defined within that blue parameter. I don't own the far eastern portion. I want to make four salient points about the property. I'm a retired architect and planner, and I like to compare this piece of property with Buc-E's property. It has exactly the same northeast quadrant of the intersection of two major highways, and the ingress egress would be extremely similar to that of Buc-E's. The second point is, I never intended to own this property. We helped a member of our community to keep from losing it on the courthouse steps by coming up with cash to acquire this property, and I'm anxious to get rid of it. It's a lot of my retirement. But the third point I'd like to make is that we have previous discussions with Tech Dot about the concrete burn. It's very obvious, as you come down the hill, and they have agreed that that could be removed, or portions of it could be removed, if the surcharge of earth on the backside of that were removed in a light manner that was happened at the intersection of 71 and 95. All four corners were moved there. You remember the hills that we used to have, the beautiful hills. Let's see, I had, speaking extemporaneously, I had a fourth point to make, and I think it would be behoove Tech Dot to entertain a pass over on 95, like they have done at 71, and 21 passing under and accessing the other of the city, or 95 again going to Austin. So those are my four points, and I'm speaking on behalf of the potential buyer for rezoning. And let me make a point about that. They're requesting an upgrade, if not a downgrade, so everybody understands that point. Their request from Form Based Code is to upgrade the use of that property. Thank you very much. If I will fill any questions in my head.
Wait, I have a question. So you said that they're entertaining an upgrade with the Form Based Code?
Yes.
But I thought that they're asking us to do C1. Is that right? Am I not understanding?
According to the, to the buyer, in their information that I've gotten from them, they're looking for an upgrade to the property.
I think they're referencing...
I want everybody to understand that, because I've heard the other way around. It's not a downgrade.
Mr. Beck, I think the issue is, in the upgrade downgrade, let's just say that the most restrictive would be CMU, then the next would be C1, and the one after that would be C2. And I believe what they're speaking to is, the most eastern is C2, so they would be upgrading to C1, but CMU is more restrictive. So what they're asking for is between the two zonings that exist.
It would be basically an upgrade, correct?
Yes.
On the far east side.
Okay. Anything else?
Any questions for Mr. Beck? Thank you very much, Mr. Beck.
Thank y'all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? Not officially, is there one more? I know it's kind of a pain, but I need you to at least come to the microphone, and then I'll let you fill out the stuff with the city secretary here, if you don't mind. And just state your name and where you live.
I'm Bill Reynolds. I also live on this hill. But I only asked, was y'all talked about having a committee, you talked to the neighbors about being on it, to talk about what would be a good thing in this neighborhood. This is the first we heard of development options of this neighborhood. The neighbors have showed up to talk. If y'all are having a workshop to talk about what might go good there, or what we all might feel comfortable with, the neighbors are here to talk. All we need is to know when, where we should show up. We'd love to talk about it. We know that the corner has to be developed into something. It's just most of us don't necessarily want a 24-hour gas station, when there's already a Buc-E's, there's already a Shell, there already was an Exxon who figured out, eh, it's not a point in being an Exxon with Buc-E's and Shell. There can be apartments, there can be duplexes, there can be any number of options that can even be considered. You can even consider the service station. All the neighbors that live up there ask for is to just be asked. Is there a way we can all work together and be neighborly? But all I'm asking is, if y'all have a time, y'all are going to make that meeting, just send us notices. We'll make time in our schedules to be there, to at least give up our two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay, anybody else want to speak? Okay, I'm officially closing the public hearing. So council, what you have before you is the opportunity to uphold the denial from planning and zoning. You can overturn the denial from planning and zoning, or, and I'll make sure that the city attorney will keep us legal, but we can not take action and send it back to planning and zoning, and suggest that they workshop with both the applicant and the neighborhood. And we also, Councilmember Jones, I think we're all in agreement that a formal conversation with Tech Dot is, needs to be done maybe before the workshop. Can we table it and recommend it back to planning and zoning? Are we able to do that, city attorney?
Yes, those are all three options.
Okay. So my opinion is that it needs to go back to planning and zoning. I think the neighborhood has expressed concerns at planning and zoning. They've been very clear about what their concerns are tonight. They've also, and not all neighbors are like this, they're recognizing the fact that it's not going to be vacant property forever, but they would like to have some input into what is going to be developed there, and that seems like a very reasonable request to me. One thing, and we'll visit with the city manager about this in the future, but it does bother me a little bit for the applicant to say, man, we brought this to you eight months ago. So we may need to have a trigger where we have a workshop, and maybe do something preliminary with P&amp;Z board, so that from their perspective, this seems like it's been going on for a really long time. From our perspective, it was heard by planning and zoning last Thursday. So that's my opinion on it, but I'm happy to take. Any questions, if anybody has, or if anyone wants to make a motion?
Okay. I just, I want to talk about this just a little bit.
You bet.
Okay. One thing, and I just really want to commend our city manager. We've had a lot of issues that have come up that we've had to address in this city. And I know a lot of people, we as a council, have gotten criticized for just sitting up here and being led around. And I want to be real clear about this. We do stuff properly. We workshop it. If we see that there's going to be a problem with something, we workshop it. We don't all sit around and agree and do whatever we're told. There's every council person up here, except for Ms. Rogers, who this is just really, I think essentially, your second meeting, or, you know, I, we've disagreed quite a bit. But once we workshop it, and we get together, and everybody's had their positions heard, it's pretty easy to come up here and vote on something and be unanimous. And so I would like to see that happen with this. I know many of the people that live on the hill over there, and I just want to make sure that they get input into this with also the Form Based Code, giving attention to that, because that was a huge, and you can speak to that, how much time and how many citizens were involved in that. And, you know, we do, we do want to bring businesses in, but you know what, we're... We're a small community, and we want to make sure that, I want to make sure that we're representing our citizens. That, that's my position. So, that being said, you know, I don't know if I can make a motion to send this back to planning and zoning with a workshop, preferably if we could at the end of this month, so we can just kind of keep this moving, if they possibly can get that recommendation. That's my motion.
If we, if I have a second, we can have discussion about that. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jones. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. The motion is for it to go back to planning and zoning, for them to, um, schedule a workshop as soon as possible. Councilmember Ennis?
Councilmember Jones, uh, I, I agree with you completely. I, I would appreciate having those comments you made about where, what you would like to have considered in this workshop, included in your motion, if that's possible. Because I think they need to hear from council that we are very concerned about the effect it's going to have on the neighborhood. And whatever concerns you have, I think it ought to be included in your motion, so they have a starting point.
One other comment, and, and Ms. Bills, I think you can confirm this. If you guys look at the two R numbers, the two lots that are to left, for lack of a better term, that would be west, those are the, that's where the commercial mixed use, those two lots are commercial, thank you. You'll note that that purple line heads east on the other side. And I believe, at the time, the reason it didn't go straight across and be four of those lots is because of the retaining wall. So I think that's part of why that line was drawn where it was. But I want everyone to realize, to your point, Councilmember Ennis, when they go back and workshop it, across the street, it's CMU for considerable distance, all, all the way back to the end of that purple line. And, um, I know there's been some conversations about, but there's already a gas station there and that type of thing. But the Form-Based Code was expensive. It was a lot of money, a lot of time, energy, and effort, more than money. And it, it's not an arbitrary line. There was a lot of thought that went into it. And I believe that's what the neighborhood and also what council is confirming, that we, we did, we went to Form-Based Code for a reason. And it's to change and to, to be able to keep the character of our town. That being said, we absolutely know that there's going to be development. So I believe that's why the recommendation is for a workshop. Are there any other comments?
I'd like to hear from the city manager, if she has any.
Sure. Um, Mayor and Council, I, I think it's an excellent, um, decision to put it back to P&amp;Z to do a workshop. They meet the last Thursday of every month. Today is the 12th. That is on the 28th, so I'm going to ask Jennifer to get with the developer. And we will, uh, reach out to the district engineer and the assistant district engineer, and see if we can't get an expedited meeting next week with them. Because the deciding factor, in my opinion, as to what this is zoned and how it functions, is access from Tech Dot. Because to the neighbor's point, if the only way in and out of this property is off of Spring Street or CP Johnson, I think that has to be a factor, um, as, as it applies to zoning. Because I, I think the assumption was probably made that the commercial impact would be on the commercial streets, which are your two-state highways. And if Tech Dot is not going to grant you access to that, then that is something P&amp;Z needs to know, because that will change how they wrestle with this in a workshop. So, um, as staff, we pledged that we will, um, work with Tech Dot personnel as soon as possible to see if we can get that important question answered, so that P&amp;Z has all the information they need then to make a decision.
Okay, council, we have a motion. Did it go back to planning and zoning for a workshop? That was made by Councilmember Jones, and I, um, I guess we should encourage them to meet soon as possible, or?
Yeah, so just, let me just throw a couple of things in that motion to, uh, Councilmember Ennis's point. And if you want to counsel me during this motion, I wish that you would. Because I, I think we want it to be very thoughtful and specific, and get to the point, and not waste people's time. So if y'all have, you know, if somebody has a question, you know, let me know. But my motion would be that we send this back to P&amp;Z for a workshop, that the neighborhood is notified, that the expectation is made that the city will be getting with Tech Dot to, to specify access, and that, uh, that workshop reaches a conclusion that is, um, reasonable for development as well as the neighbors. Well, I mean, obviously, oh, I don't know, I hope that, that we can do that, but that, that's the goal, okay? With the goal. So, uh-
Okay, so that's her revised motion. Do you have, does she still have a second, Councilmember Peterson?
She still has a second.
She's still got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, so it's tabled and will be sent back to planning and zoning. I would, council, if you would bear with me, I'd really like to do 9H, and then we will take a break. 9H is hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for a brewery, distillery, or winery use on 0.046 acres of the building block three west of Water Street located at 809 Main Street, and at 0.184 acres of building block three west of Water Street located at 705 Pine Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, setting out conditions including a severability clause establishing an effective date, and move to include on the June 26, 2018 agenda for second reading. Ms. Bills?
This item is for a conditional use permit to allow a, specifically a distillery use. Uh, this is for the Copper Shop Distillery that was already in existence across the street, and they're wishing to relocate to a larger site, so they are able to expand their seating and their production capabilities. Uh, the site that they're looking at is currently zoned, uh, there's a building up front that's on downtown mixed use, or historic Main Street, and then also downtown mixed use. Uh, within both of those districts, a CUP is required for distilleries, wineries, and brew houses to make sure that, um, they're not creating any nuisances. To give a specific layout, uh, the, the building will host the tasting room. Uh, there's an outdoor patio, covered patio attached, um, where people will be able to seat, be seated. And then on the other property is, will be the actual distillery that'll go into an existing building. All right, with our conditional-
I'm sorry, can you go back to that map, please? So...
Okay, do, I was gonna say, do you know where you are?
I'm sorry, just, I was just trying to get really clear the, while you're talking about that. I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Uh, in our conditional use permit regulations, there's five criteria to consider. Uh, the first is, is the use harmonious and compatible with the surrounding existing uses? Uh, in small-scale production businesses and assembly spaces are compatible with the surrounding uses for the historic downtown offices, retail, and restaurants. Uh, the activities requested by the applicant are normally associated with the permitted uses in the base district. And again, it's the, it is a complementary business to the other uses that are typically found in a historic downtown. The nature of the use is reasonable. Small retail breweries, distilleries, and wineries are a reasonable size and scale at the production level they're requesting. Um, any negative impacts on the surrounding area have been mitigated. Uh, the main, um, issue with any kind of brewery or distillery is the wastewater discharge, which the applicant is aware of and is already complying with at their existing site. Um, there won't be any, uh, noxious emissions or noises coming from the distillery. And then, um, additional conditions specified. Um, we have our three main conditions that are attached to any CUP, that the construction shall be in conformance with the City of Bastrop regulations. All necessary permits are, um, acquired prior to occupying the building. And that a building permit shall be applied for and secured within one year of the date of the CUP approval. And then, in this case, that the wastewater discharge comply with the City of Bastrop utility requirements. The recommendation from staff is to approve the conditional use permit, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, uh, by a vote of seven to zero at their last meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. Council, do you have any question for Ms. Bills before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, we don't have anyone signed up to speak for 9H. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, any but last call, last call. I'm officially closing the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
A move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
I will set up with a move to include this on the June 26 meeting.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Councilmember Peterson, that the ordinance number 2018-11 be approved, and that it be placed on the June 26, 2018 consent agenda? Is that what you intended? Consent agenda. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Good luck, good new location. Uh, council, I, I kind of lied to you. I probably, I said we would take a break, but Mr. Reynolds is here for 9I, and I think it will be a fast one, and I think he'd like to go home as well. So we're going to hold a public hearing and consider action to approve Resolution number R2018-39 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a subdivision variance for the street improvements related to Farms and Estate Subdivision being 2.94 acres of Farm Lot 67 east of Main Street located at 1706, 1708, and 1712 Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
So the request of tonight is to waive the subdivision requirement to improve or post fiscal surety for road improvements during the subdivision process. So this is the kind, currently it is called a subdivision variance. So this is a variance that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. In the future subdivision regulations, it'll be called a waiver, not to confuse with zoning variances. Uh, but in this case, what the request is the, um, property owners in the process of plotting this property to reconfigure the property lines. They own all three lots. And the finished plot will still be three lots in a slightly different configuration. When plotting occurs, that's when any kind of improvements related to the plot are required. So in this instance, CP Johnson is a dedicated roadway, but is not improved. So the adjacent, uh, property owner that is subdividing is required to do half of the improvements. In this case, it'd be 50% of the pavement for CP Johnson. And, uh, the subdivision ordinance, section nine, it provides an ability for the council to do a subdivision variance. Uh, if the provision of the regulation would cause an, and the unnecessary hardship of strictly adhered, in this instance, 50% of the improvements would be roughly $60,000. Um, the subdivision is not creating any new amount of lots. It's just reconfiguring the existing three. And then, um, some condition particular to the site means a departure can be made without destroying the intent of the code. Uh, the roadway does not continue. It ends into the cemetery. And the city does want to retain the right-of-way for a maintenance access, uh, for the city cemetery. But we do not need that to be improved. So staff is recommending approval of the subdivision variance to improve or place the fiscal surety. And at the, um, their last meeting, the commission voted seven to zero to approve, to recommend approval as well. One question they did have is with the new subdivision ordinance, if, um, this would still be a requirement, and it would be. The only difference would be that in the future, uh, planning and zoning would be able to make the, the subdivision variance approval rather than council.
If the subdivision ordinance is approved the way it's currently-
As it's currently drafted. That's how it is written.
Move to approve.
I have to have a public hearing first. So, I'm assuming there's no questions from Ms. Bills. This is pretty straight. Um, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, got no one signed up. Last call. I'm officially closing the public hearing, and I'm happy to take a motion.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion, a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. The Resolution R2018-39 of the City Council is approved. I, I know y'all are going to be so mad at me, but I know the person sitting on the back row, and the next one is approving a preliminary plat. Can we, can you guys have one more?
Yeah, I'm not mad. Let's keep going. Let's go.
Okay. I, we're going to take a two-minute break. We've got a couple of folks that need to go to the restroom, and we'll come right back. So we are in recess. Colorado River within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
So what we're here tonight to talk about is a preliminary plat, just for the public and council. As a reminder, where we usually start is zoning, or in this case, since it's a municipal utility district, we have the consent agreement that has the allowed product and zoning types. And then the next phase is the preliminary plat where, um, we look at the traffic impact analysis, the preliminary lot layout, preliminary infrastructure design. Make sure everything's going to work, and take that to P&amp;Z for a recommendation, and the City Council for approval. The next step is for, um, the applicant to turn in the construction plans, which I believe are actually already under review, uh, and almost finalized. But that, uh, it's the detailed plans that shows how the water, wastewater, um, drainage, streets, all of that will be provided. And then after that, the final plat can come before council for approval. And then, the applicant can either bond the public improvements and record the plat, or they can go out and build the public improvements. And then, once those are accepted, record the final plat. This area is this larger brown highlight on the map is, is the Colony Mall of 1A, Section 3, Phases A and B. The numbers, I know, it's, it's fun. Uh, this is east of FM 969. To the west, uh, they currently have under construction, uh, Section 1A, or 1A, Section 1A, and Section 1A, 2A, and 2B. Sam Houston Boulevard will run through here and then connect in at this location on 969. Uh, the, um, site is a little over 100 acres, and it is in our statutory ETJ. Uh, the, yes, the preliminary plat is required by our subdivision ordinance and the Texas Local Government Code. Plats that need the ordinance and the local government code must be approved once they have met all the requirements for subdivision regulation. And then, once, um, the construction plans are approved, uh, the construction and infrastructure can begin. The existing use of this is undeveloped. Uh, there is no zoning, but the, the land use for this area is, um, they're Colony S, 50-foot wide lots, um, in this area. Oh, there it is. So they're proposing, well, they're having 231 lots. That'll be 50 by 110 feet, and be a minimum of 6,000 square feet in size. They'll also have 11 landscape open space park lots included in this section. And this is comparable to our single-family 7, which is a minimum of 7,000 square feet and 60 feet wide. So this is a little smaller than our standard SF7. Uh, one of the questions that did come up during the planning and zoning is where are they on the, um, FM 969 improvements? And currently, with Section, uh, 1A, 1A, the numbers are a little insane. Uh, they're, they're currently, um, building out the acceleration, deceleration lanes that will go at the intersection of Sam Houston and 969. Uh, in the future, um, they're looking at, uh, at some point, a traffic signal being at this point, but they're working with Tech Dot to determine that timing and funding. Staff recommends approval of 1A, Section A, Phases A and B, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, uh, by a vote of seven to zero. A couple of questions that came up is that how is the drainage being conveyed? Uh, the drainage for this section's been conveyed through the street infrastructure directly to the Colorado River without any detention? Because at, since it's so close, it would actually be worse to detain it, um, at this point. And then, the, when are the acceleration and deceleration lanes being built, and they are currently under construction?
Council, since this is a preliminary plat, there's no need to have a public hearing, but, um, Mr. Moore is with the engineering firm, and he's available if anyone has any questions.
I have a question. So, when we first had-
Y'all first, I think, came to planning and zoning. There was a citizen that owns land right next to the development and he had concerns-- Do you remember that, Jennifer? He had concerns. He was very knowledgeable about how the water ran over there and we asked that he please be met with so that he could discuss with whoever was developing that to lend his expertise. He'd had property there for a very, very long time. He was very willing to work with y'all or whoever was going to develop that to make sure that they understood how that drainage worked on the adjacent property. Do you-- Do you know if that ever happened?
Councilmember Jones, are you sure that it's, it was east of 969? I thought the person that owned the property was west of 969. Because this is a preliminary plat, so this is the first time this part of it has ever been discussed.
Yeah, I believe there was someone that came in for this section--
Okay. Well, that's true. Like I said, I'm just trying to remember. I just, you know, I'm not objecting to anything. I was just making sure that, you know, because you just brought up the drainage, that that-- that the neighbors-- There was just one neighbor that just had a concern and he wasn't against anything. He just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what he saw happening up there. But--
My memory of that is it was on the west side.
This neighbor has come in and discussed, or at least called in, because his access is going to be provided through this neighborhood in the future, so.
And does he have any concerns?
No, just making sure that he was--
That he was going to have access?
Yeah.
Details. Okay, Counsel. Any questions for Ms. Bills or the engineer? Happy to take a motion?
A move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
A second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. That motion passes unanimously. Resolution R2018-38 is approved. Okay, we're going back to page two and we're going to nine B. Sorry, don't get depressed, but we only have a couple, we only have a few more things. Nine B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a municipal maintenance agreement between the City of Bastrop and the Texas Department of Transportation attached as Exhibit A authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is just an update to the 2000 version that we had. Coming here and basically, I guess I don't have an attachment for that. So, we mostly come in and group together all the things that we already maintained into one agreement. We had several different ones that were out there, so we kind of compiled all into one. We did have one question, which is why we pulled it for the last meeting, and that was in section seven, if you look at your packet. And we suggested some wording to TechDOT, so that was about enforcing weight limits on TechDOT roadways.
It's page 104 of your packet, Counsel.
And they said, "Too bad." So, they're not changing it. So, we're here tonight to just go ahead and get this thing passed so we can get it signed and move forward and keep doing what we do.
I thought it was interesting that we're required to pick up trash, but they're not required to pick up trash, you know?
Yes, and if you look in their agreement, it talks about, "We will help you pick up trash," but that doesn't get your requirement to pick up trash. Same thing with drainage and everything else.
Counsel, I'm sure as you reviewed the packet that you appreciated, like I did, Mr. Jobe, the maps made it a whole lot easier to see what all we were putting together.
And that's another attachment that wasn't in there in 2000 and, yeah, so on and so forth.
So, the part you put in was, "When having the appropriate resources available, may..."
They said, "No." They said they were not going to change the agreement.
Oh, they said they weren't--
Yeah, it's their standard agreement.
They said, "We're the state and you're not," is what they said.
So, and this, again, this has been in there all along. So, I think we'll just-- Unless you'd like to ask the attorney, he's certainly better at that than I am.
Okay, so it's updating the right-of-way agreement. You have two maps. It's simplifying things for Public Works moving forward.
I came here in 2011. There were several different agreements. Just put them all into one spot. So, we weren't always aware, I wasn't always aware of what we needed to take care of. Now, for the next person, here it is.
Make it easier in the work plan?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any further questions for Mr. Jobe?
You're, you're happy with this agreement? This is working for you?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing that I'll point out is that there's another attachment, as far as, so there's no confusion, about the signal agreement. That was something that, for the signalized intersection at Pecan Street, the TechDOT basically agreed to do those improvements, but we would not take over any of the signalized intersections until we reach 50,000 population. So, it wouldn't happen today, but in the future, it definitely would happen.
And that's also another one of those things. That's just the rule, right?
That's just the rule. That's right. We call that an unfunded mandate.
I motion to accept it. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Counsel, is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Remnitz?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jobe. Look forward to anything that makes your work plan easier next year. Okay, we're on nine C. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending Chapter Four, Section Six of the City of Bastrop Personnel Policies Manual regarding emergency duty pay, extra duty, and on-call procedures as attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and providing for an effective date. Ms. Cantrell, we don't see you very often.
I know, you don't. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Counsel. I'd like to first start by saying that this policy change was initiated by our field personnel. So, it was a real pleasure to take this journey with them. Zainah and myself went to BP and L and met with the Bastrop Power and Light staff, as well as Public Works, to kind of go over what their wishes were as far as how they should be compensated for on-call pay. And we went back and forth on that. They were part of the research. We talked about the cities that we surveyed and what their policies are, and we came to an agreement that what they were looking for is to be compensated for holiday pay. So, what the old policy was, was any time that they received a call-out, they would receive two hours minimum pay and then any hours worked beyond that they received. But they had to meet the 40-hour threshold work week of working 40 hours before they got time and a half. What they requested is that on work weeks that included a city holiday, that they would automatically receive time and a half for being called out during that holiday work week. So, the surveys that we city, the cities that we surveyed, we found only one that did not pay time and a half for holiday pay. And so, our competitors that are close by, they're all paying time and a half. The budgetary impact on this is minimal. It's less than 1,500. We went back in 2017 for the calendar year and it was less than 1,500. And then we did a projection for this year and again, it's a minimal impact. So, that's where we're at. And also, there was a question on the exempt status employees that we added to this policy as well. And what that has to do with is our directors and our superintendents are exempt, so they don't receive overtime compensation. And when we put our readiness levels into effect, say, three or four, where we're going to have an event that's going to require our guys to usually, Public Works to give an example on an ICE event--
When she's saying readiness level, she means the emergency management?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, exactly. But Public Works during an ICE event might have three different shifts for their personnel where they come in. Well, our directors and superintendents are usually there 48, 72 hours, however long it takes, and they're not compensated for that. So, what we're saying is they get eight hours of compensatory time after those two days to relax and rest, but they normally probably won't even take it. But we want to make sure that it's in there so they can have that opportunity as well.
Thank you, Counsel. Because I, the $1,500 was like, that's just next to nothing. And then I realized, well, they're already being paid time, so it's only half and it's only in weeks with holiday. So, it really, it's, it's not a huge deal, but if I'm getting called out on Wednesday of Thanksgiving week, I, it'd be nice to get time and a half when I explain why I'm going to possibly miss Thanksgiving dinner. So, I think this is a great thing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Cantrell?
So, you're going to-- My question was when, when she was talking about on the exempt employees, when it says the exempt employees will occur eight hours compensation time for emergency events, whichever you guys getting called out, water leak is an emergency to somebody. So, I asked her just to put in a little more clarification that it's a, you know, a red light emergency that would get the eight hours instead of just an emergency event because the water doesn't turn on. It's an emergency to me.
Exactly, and I will clarify that in the policy.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Ennis?
So, to clarify-- Excuse me. A holiday week, let's just take Thanksgiving week when oftentimes you have Thursday and Friday off. They would get overtime, they would get time and a half on call-out on Thursday and Friday, but not on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yes, for that whole week. Anytime there's a holiday during that week, they would get time and a half.
But not before the policy change?
Correct.
Well, what I'm saying is they work Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. They have Thursday and Friday off, say. If, if they're not, they're going to be working the first three days. They're called out on Thursday and Friday. Or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night? Okay.
And, and what the previous policy was is if you've only worked three days, you've worked 24 hours, you're not getting time and a half for getting called out on Thanksgiving. And this policy would say it's a holiday week, you get time and a half for getting called out Monday night or Thursday, that that 40-hour threshold doesn't have to be met.
I was more clarifying it for those folks who are watching us tonight because it's, it made it sound a little bit like they got overtime pay, I mean, the time and a half anytime they worked during that week, and I wanted to make sure I wasn't confusing.
That's a good point. So, it's for their non-scheduled hours they would get overtime pay.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, Counsel?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Please congratulate the guys, the guys and girls, the all of the people who worked on this together. I'm told that it was an eye-opening when you write down the rule and then realize you're going to have to live by that and what does that mean and what's fair to everybody. And I also appreciate the question that Councilmember Rogers asked and that you provided to all of us so, so that the public knows that these, the shortest call-out time is potentially once every five weeks for Bastrop Power and Light, but some of the departments are as long as they're only on-call once every 12 weeks. So, it's, it's reasonable, but it is certainly impactful, especially as Mr. Jobe said, it seems that Mother Nature always has emergencies on holiday weekends. So, I think it's, I think it's a really good step and congratulate them for coming up with that.
I will. They really did take ownership of it, so it was a pleasure to work with them.
That's great. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to page three and we only have three items. We're on nine D at the top of page three. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-40 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving an easement allowing TechDOT to construct the slope of the overpass in the city's right-of-way as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documentation, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Essentially, as you can see in the staff report, as part of the Highway 71 improvements when TechDOT comes over the river and they expand the feeder roads, one of your exits will be here near Lover's Lane for your off-ramp. So, if you're familiar with this area, here's Lover's Lane, here's Gil's Branch, and this is the area that they're asking for an easement in. And what this easement will be was just the slope of their extra dirt and grass that they're going to-- But that happens to be city property right there, so they need an easement from us to, to do their improvements.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
There's a huge piece of dislodged concrete just on the other side of Lover's Lane. Do you know where I'm talking about?
I do.
Is that going to be-- Is that, is that going to be addressed as part of this? I mean, maybe that easement doesn't include it, but won't that have to be addressed as part of this?
It will not be part of this, but what you're talking about is the ditch that's here, I believe. And we are, we just, our FEMA funding is fixing to be here. So, that, that's what'll get the repairs done. We're just waiting on the money.
Clarification, this resolution is really about the city granting the easement so they can build their slope.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Jobe? Move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Remnitz?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Resolution Number R2018-40 is approved unanimously. We're on nine E. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-41 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending a contract for the construction of a 16-inch water line to M and C Fonseca Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $86,458 as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the change order and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Essentially, this, the 16-inch water line that we, we installed essentially from Popeyes to Sonic had to be bored under the river. The-- This is extra footage for the boring. It also includes two air-relief valves that had to be added because of the angle that the water line comes up. The, the overall bore into the river was approximately-- Let me look at my notes here, sorry-- About a extra 60 feet of boring that had to be cased. And this is something where the-- The reason this is coming to you so late, and actually, we didn't receive the change order for quite a while because these folks went ahead and did the work. So, after we did some calculations, we went back, took out everything, and it was only the improvement, and it equals to $86,000. Because this is over $50,000, we brought your attention to do the change order. It still only means four and a half percent of the overall contract price, which we have the limit to go up to 25.
Move to approve.
Hold on. This irritates me to the core of my being. You do not do the work before it's authorized. I do not understand. You said there were two air-relief valves and the change order I'm looking at only has one air-relief valve, and it looks like from the definition, it was because of the two bores that were done and it created an isolated high point. So, did the engineer design it wrong or did they have problems with the bore and that's what caused the isolated high point? Because if that hadn't happened, you wouldn't need an air-relief valve.
There were problems with the bore. And, sorry, I misspoke. It was a two-inch air-relief valve, not two-inch release valve.
It was one two-inch air-relief valve.
Yes, they added--
And I agree, you need one if there's an isolated high point. I'm irritated about, I need to better understand what caused that.
I, I don't disagree. The angle at which this was bored, and you're familiar with, they bored on the opposite side of the river, because of the increase in, I guess, elevation on the east side of the river, there was no way to make that angle, which is why they had to push the line in versus pull. The reason for the change order is the extra footage. It had to be done to get the correct slope.
So, is there design deficiencies?
There-- You know, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's a design deficiency.
There was a failure to communicate, ma'am.
Well, that I'll agree with, yes. Well, that I'll agree with, yes. It could be debated if it was a design inefficiency or not. Of course, the only way to get this done was they did the work. It had to be done to complete, we didn't want to stop. The only mistake they made was going ahead and do the work before they got approval.
Your worst nightmare is, you know I did this for a living.
Oh, I, I am, well.
And I would have never done that without taking care of it. Granted, if you're in an emergency situation and the boring machine's going, but you do not wait two months to mention to somebody that you've had a problem. And if you've got design issues, they should have known before they started the bore that they were having problems and they were going to have an isolated high point. It's great to have an air release valve, but that's not desirably how you would have designed the system to begin with.
I don't disagree, but I can assure you I had that exact same conversation with the engineer and the, and both contractors, and this amount was doubled before that meeting.
And, and mayor and council, let me assure you of this, if we were not in the summer, the 16-inch water line was not considered operationally critical, there'd been a whole different conversation and I'd have been sitting at the table. Because, ma'am, I don't disagree with you, and staff has a fundamental responsibility to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and that means we hold folks accountable. So Trey went back, and what I would say to you is this is a negotiated settlement that neither the engineer, the contractor, nor the city was happy with. And so what I would say to that is, is we all suffered equally, but there wasn't appropriate time to engage the city attorney, get their attorneys to get that pound of flesh when operationally we consider this a critical element. But it is duly noted, and you are exactly right.
Correct.
I appreciate the fact that it was a difficult job. I appreciate the fact that it, that it costs money and we need to pay a reasonable amount of money, but when we hire a design engineer and a contractor bids that construction plan, if they've got issues with it, you bring it up as soon as you've won the bid. You do not wait until after you've completed the work. Have, should I climb off of my, this really, really irritates me.
We are on the same page, and again, that's the discussion I had with the contractors and.
I know that we are out looking for other engineers right now, and I hope that they are all listening and taking notes, because I, there's no excuse for, absolutely no excuse for this, and I am certain that I don't know the full and complete story, but I'm equally disappointed in the contractor. And I hope that we have a means of making sure, and I know we don't live in a perfect world, but that we take every possible step to avoid this from happening again.
We certainly will.
And sorry, Councilmember Jones.
For what it's worth, I got on my soapbox with him myself, so bless his heart, he just needs this to go away. That being said, motion, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Ennis. Have I mentioned I don't ever want to see something like this again? If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes begrudgingly unanimously, so, but we do, we need to be fair, we don't need to be unreasonable, but there were major opportunity for improvement.
I do not disagree.
And I'm trusting that you have negotiated the very best number that you possibly could on behalf of the citizens.
Everybody's feelings were hurt by the end of the meeting, I guarantee it.
Maybe not enough. Moving on to 9F. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2018-42 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the city manager to enter into a 75-year land lease agreement with Bastrop County in the amount of $102,366 for property in the city's Mayfest Park for a community center to be built by Bastrop County, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. New topic, though this is good. This is exciting stuff. The county, if you remember just sometime last year, Bastrop County was going to build an emergency shelter in, in Mayfest Park. At that time, we entered into a lease, then rescinded the lease because they realized they couldn't get their funding if they already had the property leased. So now they have their funding, everything is taken care of, and we're going to lease the property one more time. It's essentially the same thing, the same building, the only difference is we actually lost a few parking spaces simply just because they could not fit it in the lot. I think the original amount was somewhere in the neighborhood of 156, and this ends up being like 136. Still more parking than we need. Our city attorney pointed out something to me today that there was actually a discrepancy on the resolution. His name got blended with Mr. Bragg, so it was, his first name was David on the end of the document. Our city secretary is taking care of that, so it's, everybody can sign it. It's just a typo in the actual packet, but the other one's been changed. And you have one more comment, would you like to talk about that, Mr. City Attorney? As far as them to make sure they build a building?
We established your first name's not David, what was the other comment?
I, I just wanted to say that I think that someone named David Bragg would be one heck of an attorney. There's nothing in the lease that talks about obligating him to actually build the building or build it at any particular time, nor is there anything in the lease itself about our use of the facility at some point in time. So I just raise that, not to criticize the lease, it's fine as a lease, but there may need to be some other agreements with the county down the road addressing other issues. There may have been some background discussions on some of those, we just may want to paper that in the future.
When do we get the money?
As soon as we execute the lease. I will tell you that it, it essentially pays out over 75 years, so it's not a ton of money at one time, but.
But to Mr. Borkus's point, it's not like, they don't pay us after they build the building, they, they pay us right away?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And if we want to make some kind of adjustment, I'll certainly talk to the county about that. I don't, they intend to build the building, I don't think they're going to get insurance.
I think that's a good point, that we, we want the ability to utilize the parking lot when they're not, that kind of thing.
I agree, because I thought that that was, I thought that that was part of the deal, is that that was going to be part available at Mayfest Park for functions up there, is that?
No, no, it's only in that small corner next to the auto body shop. It's only 2.3 acres. Yes, it can be used, it is going to be some kind of activity center and shelter for the county.
It's a community building, but I think what the city manager is saying is that the lease is, what they're clarifying is the lease is only for two acres, it's not for all of Mayfest.
That's correct.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So it's just, they are leasing just enough property to build their community building with the parking spots?
I see. So is there any sort of, has there been any sort of talk about the city being able to use that for functions up there, or, just, I'm just asking, it's, I don't. We have had multiple conversations with Smithville, Elgin, Bastrop County, and ourselves about working to create consistent emergency shelter guidelines so that in the event of an emergency, the other cities that may not be affected could augment staff for those things. We've not talked about it, but we have such a great relationship with the county, I can't imagine that if we needed something, they would not be accommodating.
I agree. So if, if anyone wants to make a motion, they, they could include to have a conversation with them, do you want to make that, you can make that a part of your motion or you can accept it like it is and we can worry about that?
Move to approve is presented.
So I have a motion to approve, second, I have a second motion from Councilmember Jones, a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any other discussion? Trey, it'd be good if we visited with them and just, you know?
Yes.
I, I agree that we're all in this together, but it would be nice to know that we can utilize the parking lot and there's not going to be chains at the end of the parking lot or something.
Oh, no, that was actually part of the original discussion.
That has to be open?
Yes, and the change in it is if there's 121 spots, not 136.
Gotcha, okay.
That's the only change, but yes, we would go to use the parking.
Sounds like we got it covered, thank you for clarifying that. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. It is 9:32 and we are going to go into executive session. We will be discussing two items. 10A, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase of right-of-way for construction of an 18-inch water distribution line from Well J to the Willow Street Plant. And item 10B, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase of one piece of property in and around the downtown area. It's 9:32 and we are in executive session. It's 9:57, we are back in regular session, there's no items, we are not going to take action on either 10A or 10B, and we are on item number 12.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second by acclamation. It is 9:57 and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody.